All right. Oh goodness. We'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council present. Everyone is here. If you will stand, our Missouri City Police Honor Guard will present our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Will everyone please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
I have some presentations to make tonight. First of all, I need to make one, and thank you all recently read in the Chronicle about a young man who attended Quail Valley Middle School, who won the National Geographic Spelling Bee, and he is here tonight. We're not going to say that he's from Sugar Land, but he really is, but he's in that area. We claim him too, but anyway, Rahul Nagvika, I think is, did I say it right? Come on up. Come on over here. Anyway, I'm just going to read this. It says, "Congratulations, this certificate is to commend Rahul Nagvika in recognition of placing first place at the 2012 National Geographic Bee." And we just want to say that we're very proud of you. We're very proud of the fact that, I think the Chronicle said you were a Missouri City young man, so that's all that mattered.[161.76][161.76](Laughter). You know, generally, we don't get credit for when we have things, but anyway, we wanted to bring you tonight and just recognize you for your achievements and to say thank you for representing.[174.23][174.23](Applause).
Steve?
Those are yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to ask for Detective Terry Patrick and Officer Jessica Berry to come up front and their respective captains. Mayor, as you know, every year we honor the fallen police officers during Law Enforcement Memorial Week, which culminates on May 18th. On that date, we held our ceremony for officers receiving awards, commendations, and higher rankings or higher achievements within our organization through achieving scholastic type of merits. Each one of the officers were recognized in front of their family members and their friends and the councilmen that were in attendance as well. We're very proud of each one of these individuals, and you know, we're even most proud of these two officers here, Detective Patrick and Officer Berry. Detective Patrick and Berry were singled out by members of the command staff as well as their peers as being our two outstanding officers of this year. I'll let each captain read the reasons why they were selected and the nomination letters that got them, the awards that they earned over the course of last year. So, I'll start off with Captain John Bailey.
Detective Patrick Terry was nominated for the National Exchange Club Award as Detective of the Year. Let me read a little bit about him. Detective Patrick was promoted to the Criminal Investigation Division in December of 2011. For approximately two and a half years prior to that, he was the Missouri City Police Department's Narcotics Canine Handler. He not only served the city of Missouri City, but he also assisted other police jurisdictions. Upon completion of the new detective training program, Detective Patrick was assigned to the Burglary and Theft Unit. This is a very active investigative unit, and all of its members must be highly motivated, dedicated professionals. Patrick demonstrated the appropriate characteristics early in his investigator training to be a member of that team. He has consistently demonstrated he is a self-starter with a true go-get-'em attitude. In the short time Detective Patrick has been working cases, he solved 11 residential burglary cases where an arrest was made or a warrant was asked for and granted by the Fort Ben County Grand Jury or the District Attorney's Office. Detective Patrick's tenacity paid off in one particular residential burglary case where his only investigative lead was a partial license plate and a partial description of a suspect vehicle. Two days of exhaustive research through numerous databases containing hundreds of possible matches, Detective Patrick identified the vehicle, which led him to the perpetrator and an arrest. Detective Patrick continues to be a tremendous asset to the citizens of Missouri City and the overall efforts of the Missouri City Police Department to make Missouri City the safest city in Texas. Detective Patrick, congratulations.[401.12][401.12](Applause).
I'm going to separate both and allow Detective Patrick's wife and kids to come up and take a photograph with him and members of the command staff here, and then we'll move on to Officer Berry.
(Laughter).
The baby got on black to bring them white shirts on.
(Laughter).
All right, I'd like to call the patrol captain, Captain Dwayne Williams, to tell you a little bit about why Officer Jessica Berry was nominated and received her award.
Good evening. As the chief said earlier, on May 18th, we had our second annual award ceremony over at the Civic Center, and Officer Berry was the recipient of the 2012 Mothers Against Junk Driving Award and Officer of the Year Award. Officer Berry started her career in law enforcement with the Missouri City in August of 2010. Although Officer Berry has a short tenure with the Missouri City Police Department, she has shown she is a standout among her coworkers. She's been assigned a night shift. During her time with the department, Officer Berry consistently leads not only her shift but the entire department itself initiated activity such as field investigations, traffic contacts, and arrests. Officer Berry was certified as an intoxicilizer operator this year and is scheduled to attend Drug Recognition Expert, or DRE, training this summer. Officer Berry has taken a very proactive stance towards DWI enforcement. Officer Berry has made over 75 arrests for DWI in the past year. This does not include the arrests where she has assisted with other officers with other agencies by either performing standardized field sobriety testing or conducting the intoxicilizer portion of the investigation. Officer Berry always displays a very positive and refreshing attitude towards her fellow employees and the citizens she serves.[587.29][587.29](Applause).
Will be your family.
I have to add that Officer Berry is another Pennsylvania import. She's from Schuylkill Haven, Pennsylvania, and she makes us all proud.
She ready to make some arrests. Three sets of handcuffs. She's got two on the back and one on the side, three sets.
So if you're going drink and drive, don't come into Missouri City.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I said, "If you don't believe it, she's wearing three sets of handcuffs. She will put you in jail."[621.16][621.16](Laughter).
She means it.
Yeah, that's a pretty good indicator, isn't it? Congratulations to both of our officers. We're very proud of them. All right, item four, public comments. I did not have anyone sign up for public comments. Item five, staff reports. I think we've heard all the reports of staff tonight. Item six, consent agendas. Our motion to approve the consent agenda is printed.
We approve.
Take it.
Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Wynn made the second. If there's no discussion, we vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Item seven, a public hearing, 7A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending Section 4 definitions and Section 13 sign regulations of Appendix A of the Missouri City Code entitled the City of Missouri City zoning ordinance, providing rules and regulations for the location of signs, repealing all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a penalty and providing for separability.
Oh goodness. Seems like we do something with the signed ordinance continually.
Mm-hmm. Biggest question is, has much changed since our last public hearing? Or has anything changed? Or is the ordinance still as written?
Let me. I was going to be brief, and you started asking questions. I do want to introduce and give you an outline of how we intend to proceed tonight. Jennifer Thomas will make the primary presentation and guide you through the PowerPoint, and what Jennifer intends to accomplish is showing you the purpose, goals, and how we were trying to structure, what we were trying to accomplish with the revisions of the sign ordinance. There have not been any changes because there's been no opportunity to change. So this will really be your first view of possibly an almost final version. As we work through it, there are areas we know that you will have comments about and concerns about, and you may have a different opinion than planning and zoning had. We seek your input, and we will highlight those points, and certainly welcome your input at other points during this. Very similar to the presentation that you saw on the joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and in an effort to be brief, I now turn the podium over to Jennifer.
Kyra Martinez, who you know, who has been working with us as well, is going to join me through this presentation, and we will try to be as brief as possible because we know it's a big topic and lots of conversation, so we'll try to hurry through some of the sign types that we know won't be an issue. So again, the purpose of our amendments, proposed amendments to the sign regulations, we're looking at ways to make the regulations more user-friendly, looking at ways we can update our regulations to reflect current industry trends, looking at ways to provide more flexibility within the ordinance for compliance and enforcement, and then also continuing Missouri City's use of quality design and materials. Some of the features of the new sign ordinance include a master sign plan, which we hope will be a proactive step, a tool that we can use as staff to be able to facilitate conversations with applicants earlier on in the process and try to alleviate some of the problems that we've had with placement and location that, as of right now, don't usually get addressed until towards the end of a project. We've also incorporated tables and graphs, or graphics, which we hope will allow the ordinance to be more user-friendly, more understandable, and then definitions as needed.
And good evening, Council. I'm E. Joyce Yammo with the Legal Division, and I will just kind of hop in every now and then with a few considerations after planning and Jennifer and Kyra present. One such consideration is found on page nine of the ordinance regarding the master sign plan. Just wanted to clarify and let you all know that once the master sign plan is filed, the sign regulations in place on the date on which that application is filed are practically grandfathered. So for example, if another tenant of the property comes and applies for a sign permit, if the sign regulations change between the time of filing and the date on which the sign permit is filed, that applicant will only have to abide by the sign regulations as they existed on the date on which the application was filed. So we just wanted to let you all know that.
Okay.
And that's distinct from the non-conforming status notion in that non-conforming status is basically, or can be terminated upon the enlargement of the non-conforming use, as well as if the sign is destroyed or dismantled. Under the master sign plan, if, for example, another hurricane Ike occurs, because the plan was filed on, let's say, a date before council adopted some other change, the applicant of a sign permit could put up a sign that only had to abide, or only has to abide by, again, those original sign regulations that were in existence on the date the plan was filed. So we just wanted to let you all know that.
So what happens to the people who are not in compliance with the existing sign ordinance when this new ordinance goes into effect?
If they're not in compliance, they don't have any protected status. In order to have protected status for non-conforming, a sign has to be legal. So it has to be legal upon the change in the ordinance. So if it's not legal, it's illegal, let's say it was today, that sign would be illegal today. If you pass this ordinance, if, let's say, this was final adoption and it has gone through all of the necessary processes, it would be, if it was illegal, it would still be illegal. So in order to have that protection, it must be a legal sign.
Do we know how many illegal signs we have today?
I don't, off the top of my head, a number. I don't think we, we don't track them like that, but when they become an issue in terms of the department being made aware of it, or if they come in to make a change.
He has Paul, he's on the back row.
Yeah.
Oh, no, yes, but.
The number.
And we'll talk through that as you come up with your plan, because, yeah, we can do this, but I want to make sure we're not compounding a problem by doing this.
Okay.
Given that same example you just gave about the hurricane, wouldn't that applicant have, the person whose sign blew down as a result of hurricane, would he have to come before and have another, fill out another application?
He would probably simply just have to fill out a sign application if his sign is, he's erecting a sign pursuant to.
Knowing that you're going to have a different sign, you're going to have different.
See, in Houston, you pay a sign.
Type of sign ordinance. Would you encourage him to comply with the new ordinance even though he wouldn't have to?
Yeah, and I think so. And even, you know, applicants that have come in over the last several, you know, months, over the, you know, year that we've been working on this, we've alerted them to the fact that we're making these changes. And so where the changes may result in a better-looking sign, we've discussed some of their options based on what the new ordinance, if approved, might allow their sign to look like.
E. Joyce, if I can clarify what you're saying there. If someone has a conforming sign now, we change the ordinance, which makes theirs a non-conforming sign.
Yes, yes, sir.
And then something like a hurricane hits and wipes out their sign, are they able to rebuild the sign in the same condition it was prior?
They would not be able to rebuild their sign in the same condition.
They'd have to follow the new.
Correct. If it's a non-conforming.
And that's true of structures as well.
Correct.
It's always been in place. I just wanted to get that clear.
If there's what, 50% or more damage, I think it is, it has to be brought up to code.
And just to clarify, this ordinance changes the percentage for signs to 60% in accordance with state law, because there's a specific state law.
60% of it is damaged, it's considered a new sign.
Or 60% of the cost, actually.
Right.
Considered a new sign.
Yes. Okay. So just very briefly, again, what is a sign? A sign, you know, is anything that's attached to a structure, land, that has any kind of messaging, any kind of advertising that directs attention to a business or service for either that property or somewhere else.
That includes wearing the sign?
I'm sorry?
That includes wearing the sign?
Oh, human sign?
Yes, yes.
You said attached to a structure, so.
Oh, attached to a device, whether it's a human, whether it's, you know.
All right.
Yes, but it does include human signs.
Including plants?
Yes. While we did look at the entire sign ordinance and made revisions to the entire ordinance, there were certain sign categories that were specifically focused upon, and these are some of the categories that we're going to take a look at tonight. Flags, we've always started off with flags because I think everybody's pretty much been on the same page in terms of flags and flagpoles. The only change to what's existing is to expand what types of flags would be permitted, and currently, it's restricted to governments and nonprofit entities, and the proposal from P&amp;Z and also from staff is to open that up and allow businesses to be able to fly their flags as well. Canopy and awning signs, not really, not much of a change from what is current, except that we are distinguishing between the terms, a canopy sign and awning sign. We are, canopy and awning signs in terms of the calculation is still a part of wall signs, so whatever signage is placed on a canopy or an awning, it would be up under the allotment that a business or a service would get for their wall signs. Also, with awning signs, if you remember this time last year, we made changes to our architectural standards that allowed awnings to be business identity colors, and so they can be part of the signage of a business, of a building. So this proposal would restrict the messaging portion, the sign, on an awning to the valance, the hang portion of the awning, and not on the projection.
But this is within a business development?
It would be independent or integrated business development. Whoever incorporates an awning and.
So I'm in the Kroger shopping center, and all of a sudden, my one little store, we want a canopy. I can do that?
Well, the canopy is more structural. Right now, they could add a canopy in an awning. The difference with the architectural standards is, is that awning can be their business identity color, and then this allowance for signs would allow them to put their signs on there. But in integrated business developments, those business identity colors, they have to be uniform within integrated businesses, and that was approved by you all last year. Monument signs, even though this is a big change, I think we moved it up in terms of the presentation, because I think we're on the same page in terms of what we're looking at. Again, addressing some of the issues that we were considering when tackling monument signs, some of the comments that we received back were the limitations on the height of monument signs, the limitations on the bottom of the sign being no higher than 18 inches from the ground, setback issues with monument signs being set back so far away from the public right-of-way and from visibility, and then also conflict points with landscape placement in relation to monument signs. So the proposal includes raising the sign base to allow it to be at a height of about three feet, up to three feet, and that would be consistent with our landscaping requirements as they stand today, which landscaping in our buffer areas are required to be a minimum of 30 inches at the time of planning. And so this would allow the base to be raised a little bit higher than that required landscaping. And then also, in terms of sign visibility, we've reduced the setback. The signs have to be placed from the street, and then we've increased the allowable height for monument signs based upon the speed of the road that they're adjacent to. So we're introducing three new classifications for monument signs, what we're terming low-profile, medium-profile, and high-profile. The low-profile still being fairly consistent with what our regulations are today, maximum height of 10 feet, and then posted speed limit, they can be on any roadway within the city because it's pretty similar to what we allow today. Medium-profile signs could go up to a maximum height of 15 feet, and they would be limited to roadways that have speeds higher than 40 miles per hour. And then high-profile, the big, big signs for our city, would be a maximum height of 24 feet, but the condition would be, the speed of the road, adjacent roadway would have to be over 50 miles per hour, and then it would also have to have elevated lanes at a clearance height of at least 16 feet.
Do these changes somehow help with the businesses that sit far back?
That's the goal, and, yeah, especially considering not only the building setbacks, but then also the variation in the width of the right-of-way and of ditches and things in different areas of the city. So hopefully, with a closer, with the setback being a little closer, and then also the height of the sign, hopefully it does address some of those issues that we have now.
What is the current number? You have number here, two, three, and four?
Yeah, it varies. It's based on street frontage, so it varies based on the type of sign, whether it's an integrated business, whether it's an individual business development. So it varies, kind of fluctuates depending on where the sign is being located. And then also.
But would this high-profile with four, would there be an increase of what we have currently?
Well, we currently don't allow high-profile except for one development by PD, and that would be the closest we would get to high-profile signs existing.
Yeah, and how many did we allow on that one? Three?
That one was allowed three. And keep in mind, with the sign placement, the high-profile signs have to be a minimum of 100 feet apart, so based on what that actual business frontage. And one thing that isn't on the slide as well is, high-profile signs are limited to integrated business developments. Individual business developments would not be able to utilize a high-profile sign. So whatever frontage that integrated business development has, and then with the spacing from other high-profile signs and other monument signs would determine how many they would have.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
You may have it borrowed on in your slide, but how does this change the landscaping in front of it?
Right now, it doesn't touch landscaping, only in trying to push the sign away from that conflict point. Right now, because we don't traditionally consider signs until after the landscape plan has been approved, the landscape is usually set in the buffer, and usually the signs are also placed within that buffer after the landscape plan has already been set. So it doesn't change the requirements right now to the height and the types of landscaping that has to be planted, but it addresses the height of the sign and trying to push that sign away from those tight areas with landscaping.
We still wanted to encourage all the landscaping and not get rid of that, but to where pushing the sign up closer to where you can still, it's a 20-foot buffer yard that's required, and you still have to have shrubs, and you're going to have your sidewalk, and then you have your utility line and your electrical, you know, all the stuff. So the thought was to put the sign up front to where you can still have all of your utilities and your sidewalk, and it won't, they won't compete with each other, and you're still going to have the beautiful landscaping, but yet, if the sign's up closer, then it won't become an issue, hopefully, with the landscaping.
I keep thinking about Star Cinema.
Well, no, I was actually talking about, I think something the mayor knows, about the 59 diner. You know, they have that, all that shrub.
Well, see, that's the other thing. They're raising the base to 36 inches. That addresses that.
Yeah. We're not only raising it.
Yeah, there is.
You're allowing it to be closer than the landscaping, correct?
Correct.
Go back to page five. That's one of the things they addressed. They're raising the base three feet.
Yeah, I want to know if that's disheartening.
It's only 30 inches, so.
So the existing one, can they go?
The base goes up, so the bottom piece is now seen.
It can be raised or moved across into the street.
Yeah.
How does this?
They can carry down the whole number.
Yeah. Monument sign, I want to, specifically, like Star Cinema Grill, how does that help them out?
In terms of?
Were they sitting way back off in, you know, in that district?
This would allow them to put a monument sign up close to the 56.
Now, with Star Cinema Grill and then that area in First Colony, just like areas in Riverstone and areas in Sienna, they may still be restricted by, whether it's the PDs or by First Colony's property owners.
There's no question, Star Cinema had to go to First, that's FCCSA, to get permission to even do what they did.
But what have we done our part to?
Yeah, but we don't regulate.
We can't offset the deed restrictions sometimes.
I got that.
Yeah, but if they were, yeah, if they weren't up under those deed restrictions, then, and they applied for a new sign permit under this ordinance if approved, then they would be able to push it up closer. And, and, and with Star Cinema too, it depends on what their frontage is, because, you know, it's one shopping center, but it's, the property lines are divided through the parking lot and through the building. So wherever their frontage is, and then we'll get into off-premise signs as well, but wherever their frontage is would be, they would be able to push the sign up as close as they can.
Yeah, 'cause you addressed theaters somewhere in here, I know.
Yes.
Those are different.
Right here.
I know they had to go to FCCSA and ask to have their poster signs on the wall.
Well, that's every business over there.
You know, so.
Um, changeable message signs, it's a sign type that we talked about through PDs, SUPs over the last several years. Generally, right now, they're prohibited, except for some schools, churches, gas stations, HOAs. A lot of the churches have it through their SUP ordinances. We're recommending, P&amp;Z and staff has recommended, to open that up and allow it for all businesses. They would be restricted to 24 square feet for that changeable message display portion as a component of a monument sign. So whatever their monument sign is, whether it's a low profile, high profile, medium profile, they would have their total monument sign area, and then 24, up to 24 square feet of that sign area could be a changeable message sign if they desired that to be. And then we also have proposed in the ordinance, different standards on lighting, maintenance of that sign. One change that we would like to make from what staff presented to P&amp;Z is the requirement that a changeable message sign that's located within 150 feet has to be oriented so that no portion of the display is visible from a residential lot, and our recommendation today is to remove that requirement and allow the general lighting standards to govern that, that, you know, the light obviously can't flare or, you know, glare onto the residential property, but it may not be feasible for even existing changeable message signs to be structured so that they're not facing any residential lot.
Are there any special rules, Scott, that regulate signs along state highways as far as movement, color?
Not outside of the right-of-way, there are no rules, there are rules inside the public right-of-way. However, there are traffic guidelines that would be applicable that would avoid driver distractions on that, you know, how fast it can, the message can change and...
Right.
And those type of things. But outside the public right-of-way, no, there's no rules.
Off-premises signs. Off-premises signs, we are, P&amp;Z has proposed and staff, proposed to P&amp;Z to allow one off-premise sign to be located on a premises or on a common shared driveway or entrance for two or more contiguous premises. And to allow or, and to require that the premises where the sign is located be no more than 1,000 feet from the premises where the advertised business is located, and we feel that's important to prevent the B, B word in the city. Off-premises signs would still be required to meet monument sign design standards, and then we would also require an easement for the placement, placement and maintenance of those signs.
Over on North and South Gardens, we've zoned based on all of that industrial.
Right.
And, and how would this apply to those industries over there, which is uniquely different than being in an industrial or business park?
And, and by this ordinance, the lots within 1,000 feet, if the desire was to advertise on the beltway or, you know, right off of the beltway, those lots within 1,000 feet or the, yeah, the lots within 1,000 feet would be able to, but they would have to have permission from the property that they're planning to place the sign on.
Either to rent something or get an agreement with them. So would we communicate that to them? Because there have been people asking.
Okay. And I, and I think once the new ordinance is adopted, we did plan to do a communication to businesses and to let them know what some of the new requirements would be.
But them signage is, is much, much difficult for visibility then.
We will.
Because they're on two dead-end streets.
Yeah. And this is just an illustration, trying to explain the concept of an off-premise sign, and I won't, I don't know if you can see, it's far away, but the business location is, it's to the bottom of the picture, but the sign location is towards the top, and the business location itself is outside of that 1,000 feet, but the premises on which the business is located is within 1,000 feet of the premises on, on which the sign is located. Temporary monument signs is something that P&amp;Z addressed at, with their final report, and to allow temporary monument signs, similar to what we see with construction site signs or vacant land, sell signs in terms of material size, but to allow businesses to use a temporary monument sign while their permanent sign is under construction. And the limitations on that would be, the sign, the temporary sign would have to be removed either upon the construction, the finalization of the construction of the permanent sign, or within 60 days of the application for the permanent sign being made. So that's included in the ordinance.
60 days would be typical of being able to, to, sort of, from a temporary to a, to a permanent sign as far as, you know, the manufacture of it or the production of that permanent sign?
That's what was expressed to the commission from one applicant that was there requesting that consideration, with that it would take about 60 days for their permanent sign to be constructed.
But you would, you would think if they were building a place, building a sign would be in all of the plans of building a place.
Yeah. And, and some of that with the master sign plan, it might be something, you know, we can't address earlier on in the process instead of...
I don't have a problem with the 60 days, but I think anything more than that would, you know...
Um, specialty event signs, pretty much those standards are staying the same, with the exception, staff and P&amp;Z is requesting to add another city right-of-way into the, the list of right-of-ways, and that would include State Highway 6 and Sienna Ranch Road. Right now, State Highway 6 and Sienna Parkway is included, but since Sienna Ranch Road has opened up.
Oh, yeah.
That would be another option. A couple of staff revised comments or recommendations. Directional signs and the staff recommendation to P&amp;Z, we have prohibited directional signs in suburban districts, which, you know, typically would be rezoned when new construction occurred. However, for those instances where you might have a homestead or someone needs an, you know, inner exit sign for their property, directional signs should still be permitted for those situations. And then warning signs, staff had presented to P&amp;Z a limitation of one warning sign per 100 feet of property line, and that's probably not practical, so we're recommending allowing up to three warning signs, you know, beware of dog, security devices, per 100 feet of property line.
Is there a sign dimension, a sign dimension for these particular types of caution signs?
Yes, in the ordinance, we have a recommendation on the maximum size or sign area for warning signs. Sign lighting standards, these are two items that staff is recommending removing from the P&amp;Z recommendation that was brought to you, simply because it may be difficult to enforce, and so just, again, requiring lighting standards to comply with not preventing glare onto drivers or in conflict with drivers. Portable signs.
But...
Yes.
We, we used to require that the lighting have to stay on, within their property.
That the light?
The, the light have to stay, is that different from staying within your property?
It, well, yeah, preventing glare, we have, I know from zoning connected to some of the youth districts, we have candlefoot, the flow of light at the boundary of different residential property lines, and that would still apply by those zoning districts, depending on, you know, what business is doing what. But we do work with, you know, businesses to shield the light, to make sure that it's not doing a direct flow onto residential properties. A-frame signs, we've provided some provisions for businesses to use, A-frame signs, horse image board signs. Garage sale signs, we've provided some standards for the placement of garage sale signs, allowing them on-premise and off-premise, off-premise being within 1,000 feet of where the sale will take place. The same with real estate signs, residential contractor identification signs allowing them on the premises during the timeframe which a former electrician might be doing work inside a residential house.
And how, how long after completion of the work do they have to be removed?
The, the same day, upon completion, the same day upon completion of the work.
Really?
Does that, like a pound of construction?
I'm sorry?
On roofing?
Does that bounce up against some of the, the deed restrictions that, that we might have? I, I thought, I don't know, some deed restrictions might show that they could leave it there for at least three days, so I mean, would it conflict with any of those?
Yeah, if, if the deed restrictions allow them for up to three days, then ours would be more restrictive than those deed restrictions, and so they would have to comply with the...
With the one day?
Yeah, it would have to be removed within one day. But if that's something that council wants to extend, this, our, our recommendation is, is to be removed on that day, but if, you know, council wants to extend that time period, then we can do that as well.
Okay, I have some for Paul then.
You have a question, Paul?
No, 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 I have some, I have some that I know the work's complete, and the contractor signs are still in the yard and have been for some time.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, it's not. Human and vehicle signs.
No, let's talk about political signs.
Yeah, you skipped over political signs. So I think she did a burp.
Thought we were falling asleep, huh?
We're not, there's, there's no changes unless council desires to make changes on political signs. So what you see in your ordinance right now is what's existing in our current ordinance.
So your sign is how big?
The political signs? Political signs can be up to 32 square feet.
I can have 32 square foot yard sign?
For a political sign.
In your personal yard?
I think we've got to change that.
It's actually 36, and that's pursuant to state law.
I think we need to change that.
They actually have a 36 square foot sign in their front yard.
Now, that's a state law?
And given that that relates to state law, I would be glad to break into executive session either now or at a more convenient time to discuss the implications of the state law mandate on cities.
Yeah.
Does state law allow more than one?
Is this a recent state law change?
No. No, the, the, this is the same state law that was in effect the last time we revised the political sign ordinance.
What do your signs, what was the size of your signs before the 32 feet?
Before?
36, you mean?
Yeah, I'm...
Thirty, how many minutes?
Thirty-six.
Because I'm not, do you remember when this was changed? This was...
Twenty-four by, it was three or four seasons.
Yeah, this was the last few years.
I'll, I'll be glad to look at the origin of that. The last time I looked at it, it's the same version that it is now.
And is there a time limit even under the state regulations?
There is none.
Then they can be up forever?
Means during the election time?
And is there a priority?
There's no limit as to duration on the state law, under the state law.
You can have as many of those signs up as the state says as they want.
Correct.
I think we need to pass a regulation that sets the size of the sign in Missouri City and move forward. Somebody want to bring an action, we'll deal with it then.
I would like to break into executive session to discuss that.
And I think most people would...
Appreciate that.
Perhaps we should go into executive session on that discussion.
And, and I'd be glad to do that at the conclusion of the sign discussion in case anything else comes up.
All right. Human signs regulated by the state too?
We, we have proposed regulations for human signs. Right now...
Proposal is one per business.
One...
Our proposal was none.
And council can, can make that change. Staff did propose to P&amp;Z, staff did propose to P&amp;Z, and P&amp;Z... P&amp;Z has proposed to allow one human sign per business, so long as they're located on private property.
You attended that meeting, right?
Meeting.
Which meeting?
The one with one per business. Was there any discussion about what council started?
Are you talking about the joint meeting?
The meeting that, that when P&amp;Z proposed one per business? Was there a discussion about, anybody venture to say what, what we, what council thinks about that?
No, and I think, because human signs, we've talked about, you know, all along the way, and I think the conversation has been, you know, considering like the tax businesses that typically incorporate human signs.
We know the perpetrators. Who they are, trying to figure out how, how did we disconnect from getting in from, you know, getting...
You got the going out of business, sale that are walking the street.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, staff's recommendation to P&amp;Z is based on, you know, most other surrounding communities and other communities have provisions for human signs.
Every now and then, look over this way.
If we agree to none...
City, you should have planted them under the overpass.
And if, if that's a desire, then we can, we can make that change.
Yeah, we think you're gonna have to make that change. We, we're gonna, we're gonna amend that at the end.
Okay. All right. Okay. I don't know if I want to click to the next slide.
Yeah, you do.
Vehicle signs. Um, I don't really need to go through the background, because we've talked about it, I know everybody has an opinion on, on the vehicle signs. What staff's proposal to P&amp;Z and P&amp;Z's recommendation has been to, is to distinguish vehicles by their gross vehicle weight rating, and from that threshold, provide requirements in terms of how those vehicles can be placed on a premise.
And what was your recommendation?
Our recommendation is looking at...
They're gonna be two and a half tons.
Gross, looking at, you know, passenger vans, the average size for passenger, passenger vans, those sports utility type vehicles, gross vehicle weighting, usually the commonly used threshold is 6,000 pounds, so the recommendation in the ordinance is to exempt signs on vehicles that are under 6,000 pounds, but those vehicles that are over, and this is gross vehicle weight rating, those vehicles that are over that threshold of 6,000 pounds would be restricted, and I'm gonna go through that slide shortly. Cargo trailers would be included, and then down at the bottom, it shows signs on vehicles less than 6,000 pounds, so like the merry maids, the geek squad, those type of cars that we don't traditionally see used as placement for signage. For sale signs, and this might go in a different, on a different route, but for sale signs on vehicles, boats and trailers in residential districts, staff made a recommendation to P&amp;Z to distinguish those types of signs that people commonly place in their personal vehicles to sell the vehicles. If there's a desire to place restrictions based on, you know, illegal activity or illegal businesses, then council would need to make that a part of their motion. But the recommendation right now is to allow people to sell their cars as, as traditionally happens.
Wait, wait, I'm gonna, we went from, we went from trucks in the parking... We went from, we went from trucks in the parking lot.
Yeah, I know. And we can come back, we can come back to the, the for sale sign. It just happened to be on this slide. Because the next slide has the regulations for the threshold for over six thousand pounds. If a vehicle is in excess of six thousand gross vehicle weight rating, then the recommendation is to require that vehicle to be located to the rear of the building where the business is located that the vehicle is leased or owned to, to the side of that building. Or anywhere, anywhere else on the premises in the front, to the side, to the rear, so long as they're actively loading or unloading the vehicle. And then what's new from, what staff is proposing that wasn't in the P and Z report is also to allow those vehicles to be on another premise using a service from another business. So if someone used their twelve passenger shuttle van to go buy groceries at Kroger, that they would be able to park on Kroger's premises temporarily while they're using that business. And so that would be an addition.
But Jennifer, this does not allow our favorite vehicle to be moved from the front of that.
To the side.
To the side where there is parking lot.
This, the way that it's written right now, it would allow them to park to that side.
Well, that doesn't make any sense.
Doesn't change anything.
And.
That changes nothing.
Yeah, and let me, and considering the side, one thing that we want, we don't want to do are those businesses that are currently parking to the side of their business that are not intentionally parking their vehicles so as to be signs, so that they're not caught in this, that their, the placement of their vehicles would then be prohibited just because we don't allow the vehicles to the side. And so that was part of staff's consideration was to keep the side placement in the language to allow these businesses to continue to park their vehicles to the side. But I know legal has worked on some other language in the event that council wants to address this a different way.
For the future, is there any way that we can require the landlords to require this in their leases? For example, somebody decides to lease a piece of, of a store and they got a big old van. If they find out they can't lease, because they can't park the van, maybe they may choose somewhere else. Because we got a few centers that they can't even park behind that have large vehicles. But let me also. That operate today.
But, but let me also ask, just from my own personal knowledge, those star vans that takes people to all that, there are smaller vans, minivans to the larger ones. How, you know, in a bigger shopping center, worse is the, the small tighter one. So does, what, what Councilman Wyatt is talking about, would that fall into the same category? Or is there a different tons, I mean, differences in weight?
You talking about transportation van?
Yeah, it's one of those big ones.
Yeah.
Like a miniature bus type.
We're talking, but.
Commuter vans at businesses.
But we're talking about businesses have their own van.
Right.
Okay, and not the commute, commuter van.
Delivery van, basically.
I mean, that's kind of, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about a store that says John Brown's Furniture Store owner. And his furniture store is in that center.
Well, no, I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm saying is, even though that's a business one, then you got a bigger complex like Kroger and you have same type of vehicle not promoting that particular business, but has the same type of signage on it. I'm not talking about the small little cars or what have you.
Do you store anything there or just?
Just store anything there because they're there.
Well, if he's over a certain weight today.
No, no, and that's why I'm, I'm just questioning, I'm not, I'm not arguing, but I'm just trying.
They're going to be there overnight.
Yeah, they are.
They will?
Yeah, they are.
They are.
If he's over five hundred pounds, PD should.
Well, that's what I was making the point. Was it, is there a weight limit to that or not? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that was in effect now.
Yeah, if, if it's over six thousand pounds, unless it's a governmental entity's vehicle, then it would still be subject to the placement requirements that, that this would do.
I was just trying to get to communicating through when these people lease, that these rules are in place, that they don't go and lease and then find out that, nah, I can't have my truck here. Or the city is beating up on me because I got my truck here.
And we could probably put something like that in the ordinance practically done. We would probably find about the failure of such, an inclusion of a provision in the lease after the violation occurred.
And then we go after the guy that's leasing the building too. Let him feel some pain and he won't do it the next time.
If I could jump in, I would bet almost every lease has a provision that says the tenant shall not violate any local laws. Standard form, I would bet it's already there. Now, getting the landlord to enforce that is a different matter. But I think the provision you're asking for is substantially already in the lease agreement.
They're going into municipal court with the person.
But Gary, just as the landlord can make that, I mean, if they're saying following the city law, can the city also do the same thing? Enforce it? Even, I mean.
The landlord, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's almost like it's, you can, either can have the landlord do it or the city.
We, we have used that strategy recently, in particular for other issues like too much window signage, high grass, that the tenants were not being responsive to us. We were able to get the property owners to be responsive and, and solve the problems for us. So if it prohibits it being parked there, it's something we'd have to study very closely on, on whether or not we can enforce it against them, but it is a concept and another way of approaching it. One thing on this that I want to interject just to muddy the waters a little more. I am concerned with being able to park beside the business that the vehicle is owned by or leased by because we may have a conflict in different ordinances. If you have a home business and you have a truck related to that home business, are we now allowing it to park in the neighborhood in contradiction to section nine point seven? We have to resolve that conflict. We do not want to open that door and bring the big vehicles into neighborhoods through this when we have the other one. We have to make sure we don't lose the provision we already have by putting forth a conflicting provision.
Have we ever addressed the number of commercial vehicles that is allowed in one driveway?
We only allow one. I know as a practical matter, we only allow one. That's what my code enforcement officers tell me, they go out and enforce. If we hear more than that, we go after them for more than one. I'm not saying there aren't more than one out there.
What about the nursery schools that have more than one bus?
Two, sometimes three.
What about the nursery school that has more than one bus?
Mayor, non-commercial, residential?
Direct TV, let me just put it that way.
In, in a residential neighborhood?
No, no, no. If, if a business.
At the business, we, we don't regulate more than one there. Not, but in the residential areas is where I really want to make sure we don't lose our protection. I'm going to let the experts get back to it.
I don't know if I got your answer, did you?
He says one.
Just a quick point of clarification. As written, the ordinance does require that vehicle, signs that have, vehicles that have signs on them are parked in accordance with section nine point seven, which is the section that addresses the larger vehicles and prohibits them in residential areas. So as written, it does, it has to be in accordance with that section.
Now, these are, these will, these will meet the weight recommendations. They're, they are panel vans.
Correct, and I think that.
There's three of them.
And I think.
Go ahead. Under, under home occupation, the ordinance is clear. There's, it's not a practice, it's also a mandate under the ordinance. Under a home occupation, there can only be one vehicle used. And parking vehicles is a type of home occupation. That, that's a conducting of business, even if it's just as simple as that.
Okay. Go get them, Paul.
Yeah, Paul, I got an address for you.
Father, I wish he hadn't come.
On Hilton Head.
To address the concern on side and rear parking, one suggestion that has been floated among staff is to prohibit that exception if the front or the side is visible from a public street. So that's something else council can consider. Another concept that has been floated among staff is just to prohibit all vehicles or signs, vehicles on which a sign exists, provided that a defendant or an operator has the opportunity to come into court and to prove certain affirmative defenses. So for example, Paul could cite a vehicle that has a sign on it that has been parked and the operator of that vehicle could then go into court and prove to court, to the court that he or she is not using the sign, or the vehicle as a sign and that the vehicle meets certain, certain exceptions such as maybe a distance requirement from a public street, such as being, you know, the vehicle being parked to the side or to the rear or just a myriad of other potential exceptions.
And Mayor and Council, that's getting into a, a type of ordinance drafting that may facilitate prosecutions. We can, when we have to prosecute something in court, if something has exceptions, we have to prove up the nonexistence of those exceptions in our case in chief. So for example, in a speeding case, we have to prove up affirmatively each time that it's not an ambulance proceeding to an emergency. So frequently, we will draft things in the form of affirmative defenses. Our code enforcement officers and our police officers in those circumstances, if, if there's a clear indication of one of those affirmative defenses that they can tell from the face of it, they're not going to cite that to court. That, that just proves up, if we have six exceptions, we have to prove up all six. If we write them as exceptions, if we draft them as affirmative defenses, we just prove up our case in chief and they can bring up one of those affirmative.
Well, I think we do a pretty good job in keeping the big trucks out of the neighborhoods. I mean, PD does a very good job of doing that. And it's, it's this middle grade truck that. And I, I think, I think where our weakness is, 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 is businesses that, home businesses that operate more than one vehicle with a lot of signs. And so, which is kind of different from this.
But hey, Joyce, as far as this proposal, the number two, where it says to the side of the building, you're saying we could amend that to where it only says the side of the building unless that location is visible from the, from the street?
Correct. You could do that. I mean, that might, I think Jennifer had a picture of, I think it was Kinder Care. That might knock out some businesses or prevent them from parking in certain areas because it would be visible. But, you know, if we move to the affirmative defense, if we kind of move to that strategy, they would be able to prove that they were not, if they were cited, which they probably wouldn't be cited, they would be able to prove that they weren't using it as a sign. So we could, we could add that to it so that if they're not using it as a sign, they still have that, the ability to come in and defend themselves.
Have you ever not used a truck that's painted with a sign on the side of it? How could you ever say it wasn't a sign? That's why they painted them on there.
And that's why they park them all out front.
And yeah, that's why they're here.
I think she may be talking about like these daycare vans.
It's still a sign. I guess they've got their telephone number and everything on it. It's a sign.
Also has to be identified for them to pick up the kids when it went to school.
I know that.
Well, that's the tough one, is the nursery schools.
That's what I'm talking about, is the, is the daycare.
I think the weight deal probably is a better way. I don't think any of us here are arguing so much about the, you know, the cars like you had here before, some of that stuff that you see.
Well, you know, the other thing that.
Merry maids and things, just the bigger trucks.
The other thing that, that to consider in, in two areas, shop, small shopping centers that we know this exists. When they put their truck and their vehicles, how much parking is left for the people coming? You know, we have parking requirements. I don't know how you figure that in terms of their vehicles or what have you and vehicles left for the rest of us to come in and shop. That may be another way of looking, looking at it. I don't know.
So we can address it by saying that it can only be on the side of the building if it's not visible from the street?
Correct.
And then the other piece is the weight.
Yes.
I didn't really think you were going to have no changes.
We can be, we can say no box trucks.
No, we anticipated.
No box trucks.
And to clarify, that same restriction could apply to the rear as well?
Correct, correct.
I think in the context of a corner lot in which the rear of an entity's business is visible from that side street, a public right of way, that's, that's.
You gotta let them have that.
Yeah, as long as it's behind the building.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
Another option could be a certain distance from a public street as well.
Don't give us any more options.
My deal is when, when they got four vehicles there and you're supposed to have so much parking for everybody. Somewhere to think about. Don't try to fix it tonight, but just think about it for the future. Just because old man got his car and truck all with signs on them.
I just have a question. The Chick-fil-A, for example, they're parked to the side because they don't have parking in the rear because their drive-through is in the rear and their building is very narrow and long. So that is going to be, that's not allowed anymore. That's what you're saying? So I, I'm just, I'm not really sure where they're going to park. But I, I just want to make sure that that's what, you, you don't want that.
I see that all the time.
If it can't be visible from the street or if there is no rear parking available.
I'm sorry?
Can you add, they're allowed on the side if it's not visible from the street?
Is that above the limit?
Or if there is no rear parking available?
That truck above the limit?
I think so.
Okay.
You said they are allowed, provided that there's no rear.
So we got an addendum to this ordinance before we.
All righty.
Does that, I mean, does that make sense? That they're allowed on the side unless it's visible from the street or if there's no rear parking available? So if there's nowhere to place the truck?
Yeah, there is. You know where that is? There's a trailer. You know where that is?
No.
There's about six hundred parking spaces where this is. It's in a shopping center.
Yeah, but.
It may not be their, it may not be their parking spaces.
Well, they can't put it in the middle of a parking center either.
But we just tell them they can't do that.
Behind it?
No, no, there is no, there is no space behind. I mean, I know when you're talking about Kroger.
Well, there's no public street behind it.
Yeah, there's a public street behind it. Right behind.
Again, I, I'm not as concerned about this van. Again, we get back to the weight size.
The box trucks is what we're talking about.
The box trucks is my main concern. These kinds of vans, I'm not offended by. That, you know, the manager of that store probably drives that back and forth every day. It's not left there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week and never moved. It's moved and I can tell you. You know, there's two or three of those around, I won't use their names. But again, the box vans, like the mattress companies and the Gold and the Furniture, those are parked out front as a sign, period. That's why they got them like that, that's why they're painted like that.
Keep in mind, there are some businesses that use vans of that size that tend to park them, you know, as close to like an intersection as possible for visibility. And I don't want to pick on any businesses.
Visibility of what, their sign or their?
It's, but they, they use vans of that size that have their signs. And it could be like a catering vehicle.
Which van are you talking about? That size?
Mm-hmm, the Chick-fil-A size.
I said, I'm not offended by those. It's the box ones that I'm.
Well, but if, if another business uses a van of that size and parks it as close to the intersection to provide visibility for lease space, that might be further back in the shopping center.
Well, let me, let me give you another classic example, Rocky Creek Rental. They have a truck that they don't have any parking in the side, I mean, onto the side, then nothing in the back. It's parked right there, right by the gas station and that barbecue place. It's that right there. And it's seen from the street?
Truck for rent?
No, it's their storage truck or moving truck or whatever that is.
Where you can rent it.
You need to rent it.
Yeah, you rent that. If you, you have a space.
Right, but I'm saying that their advertisement and all that is right there. I mean, you see, it's a big, it's.
The name is on the truck.
Their sign.
Yep.
It's their sign.
And it's right there, you see it from the.
And it's bigger, it's more than six thousand pounds.
Yes, it is.
I would think it is.
It's a van. Uncle Bob's has one on Cartwright.
I know, but what I'm saying is that they only have about six or seven parking lots to the particular one that I was talking about onto the side. They don't have anything in the back because it's all buildings in the back. Unless they park it, the only other spot for them to park it would be is facing Highway six, looking at, right in front of the barbecue.
But those trucks are part of their business operation in terms of renting trucks. Whereas the other ones is, you know, I mean, I guess it's more. whereas the other ones is, you know, I mean, I guess it's part of their operation because some of them are using for delivery. And maybe we need to come back to this one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's just too, I don't know.
We need to think about this one a little more.
Still say, saying it to the rear or to the side with these very few exceptions when there is no rear, is satisfactory. I mean, you're getting into too many specifics here.
I think we oughta come up with something and then focus, focus on future leases and that would eventually eliminate this problem.
We can come up with a few additional proposals and present those the next meeting.
Because what, what you get is somebody put in a, in a, in a, in a margin of business and maybe they're in a business that's really smaller than what they need to be in and they don't have the space to put the vehicles or what have you. And, you know, I'm not faulting anybody because people want to make a living, but maybe that's where it needs to be addressed, that they, you know, get into a center. I mean, because you got one that is nowhere, the, the person couldn't park the, the truck there. It's just, you know, you're on two sides and, and open back. There's just no way. You know, because you would see it anywhere along that public, along Turtle Creek. You, you wouldn't be able to miss it. So, we need to think about that.
Do we want to revisit for-sale signs?
Huh?
Do we want to revisit for-sale signs?
You're talking about the ones in vehicles themselves?
For-sale signs on vehicles, boats, trailers and residential areas.
I thought, I thought the deed restrictions addressed that.
Well, not in every particular neighborhood. So, this is an opportunity for City Council to speak in a more restrictive manner than neighborhoods who do not have deed restrictions or whose deed restrictions don't speak to those.
Yes, as written, there aren't any limits, there aren't any number limits on the number of vehicles or boats or other personal property that may be sold in a residential district.
Well, I think our weakness on that is, is that we're not enforcing the sign against the people who are doing home occupation that have multiple vehicles. I think the one vehicle is probably not bothering anybody who wants to think about it. But, you know, this, 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 you know, but when you got somebody that's having a mechanical type business and they're running two or three trucks and nothing has ever happened to, to them, I think that's what we need to talk about.
So, if you limited it to one unless otherwise prohibited by deed restrictions, it'd be all right.
Or, or you have to identify the, the pound, the amount of weight.
Well, we have an ordinance on weight right now. If you, you can't bring a big truck in the neighborhood except for the purpose of performing a service or delivery. Those are the more disruptive in terms of infrastructure. And PD takes care of those. They do a good job in taking care of those.
On the for-sale size, do we have any limits on someone who has a dealer license?
No. Another suggestion that we did have was to limit it to, that the car or whatever item has to be registered in the name of a resident of the property.
It'd be okay. And licensed.
And how does someone who has a dealer license who brings in three, four cars at a time, how do they, how's that handled with them?
If it's limited to one, they could not do that. They would only be able to have one vehicle on the property with a for-sale sign.
And it can't be parked on the grass?
No, no.
Is that, is that in the current?
That they can't park on the grass?
No, that, that they are limited to one.
No, that's just a suggestion. That as, as written, there aren't any restrictions, but it would be a suggestion if council desires.
I'm all for that because I know someone who brings four to five at a time and puts them in the driveway.
I'm, I'm being a little facetious here, but I'm really serious about the parking on the grass because if you start encouraging the sale of vehicles, okay, and if they're not driving it, they're gonna figure out somewhere to put it other than the space of the cars that they're driving.
Now, Frank just mentioned and that Sugarland sent out a notice, it's $200 fine if you park on the grass anywhere.
What's our fine?
Our fine?
Parking on the grass.
Up to 200, up to 500 dollars.
500, I believe.
Up to 500, yeah.
One to 500.
I know it's not necessarily a sign. Are we ever gonna address yard, yard sales and garage sales?
We do.
Council wants to, oh, I mean, it's not just signage, but the whole garage stuff?
Registering, I mean, only having one a year and things like that.
Council's up for that. We'll tackle it.
Getting a permit?
I noticed on your, I noticed on Huts' website you did something with that.
No, there are a lot of, there are a lot of cities that do that. I mean, it's a $5, it's like a $5 fee. The reason they get the fee is so you register so that you know they only had one or two, whatever your permit, that they can't have those estate sales every weekend.
Exactly.
That's why you do it. It's not, it's not to make money and it's not to stop them. It's so that you pay the $5 or $3, whatever it is, and register it so that we know who it is and how often they're having them.
I'm just trying to figure out how you're gonna enforce it.
Oh, it's real easy.
Yeah, it's one to where, I mean, in other places and just, I don't want to stay on that one, this one too long, but you just pass it out to PD about who has, who's registered, who's not registered, and kind of get those lists to them so the guys on patrol on that Saturday or they know as they drive by that, okay, this one's, this one's registered and if it's not, they can stop the other one.
What?
And in fact, the one that residents have asked.
I think, I think if we had another, you know, 20-some police officers, yeah, we'd have the PD going. And if you're registered.
Actually, I did it with the same, I mean, we never added a single officer and still made this one. I mean, it's just.
If you have them going after garage sales.
Say something civic. If you're registered, you have to have a yellow ribbon on your tree.
So, what is our current regulation if any of garage sale signs that are on off premises?
Right now, they're treated like bandit signs, so.
And are we pursuing any of that? Are you going after the?
We need to talk about that in closed session. That's a closed session item.
But we've created regulations for them under conditionally exempt, but if that's something that you want to have permitted, that can be changed, so.
No, it's not the signs that we're talking about permitting. It's a process of registering.
The event.
You know, for the, for the actual garage sale and then, and then that registration, then we can limit how many signs they can place and where they need to be.
The signs are also annoying because they're never picked up.
Oh, I know, but we can address that in the registration piece.
Yeah, but then there's so many garage sales. There's so many garage sales.
I know, but that's the one thing that residents have complained the most about. There are some cities who will only allow garage sales.
Once a year.
Once a year, period, throughout the city.
Mm-hmm.
They go, May 15th is garage sale weekend and if you want to have one. There are many cities that have gone there because it has become such an issue.
Yeah, but can I also ask that, isn't, isn't there HOA regulations on those too for certain neighborhoods not to have those? There might be, I don't know.
Yeah, there may be, but they don't, they don't typically go there.
Very few have them.
All right, let's keep going.
A lot of them. Very few have regulations.
From one, one fun topic to another, window signs.
Oh, my God.
P&amp;Z's recommendation is still to allow window signs not to exceed 25% of the aggregate window area. This ordinance would change, would clarify the definition of what is considered a window sign. So, anything on the outside, the inside attached to the glass area or situated so as it's visible to the outside of the building would be considered a window sign. If window signs, the percentage exceeds that 25% allotment, then the total area of that window sign would then be calculated as a component of wall signs. So, if it's an existing business that already has their wall signs and they desire window signage that exceeds the 25%, it should have the effect to reduce the amount of window signs or if they want a trade-off between what they have in their wall signs and adding more window signs, then they can reduce what they have for wall signs and add it to, to their windows.
So, basically, this is only going to apply to new businesses and people that remount. And, but the majority of the businesses won't be in compliance.
If, yeah, if they take off all of their window signs and add new window signs, something like that, yeah. Yeah, so, ones, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, so the ones that, that's there will remain there?
The ones that have window signs right now, and part of the problem with some of the ones that have window signs right now is how it's attached to that glass area. If it is attached to, to the outside right now, it's considered wall signs anyway. If it's attached on the inside of the window or the, the glass area, then it's subject to the 25%. So, yeah, if they're existing and they already have graphics or what have you in the windows, then.
But even, even if it's glued in or it's like using.
On the inside.
On the outside.
If it's on the outside, the new ordinance addresses.
No, 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 I know, but I'm just talking about the old ones that have sort of fully covered.
Yeah, if it, if it's graphics and stuff attached to the outside of the windows, then technically by the current ordinance, it's not under the 25% requirement for window signs. So, it would be considered wall signage.
Even though it's fully covered?
Even if, and, and fully covered, you mean with graphics or fully covered just a solid color?
Graphics.
Okay. Because if it's, and that, that goes back to what we're defining as a sign. Because if it's, if it's blinds, if it's shades, you know, if it's black tint, it wouldn't be considered as signage. So, that would be part of the architecture of the building.
Unless the blinds are actually a sign.
Unless the, yeah, unless there's graphics or images or, or anything on it.
You close the blinds and you get a sign. So, what did you decide about the dog? I see Petco back here, but what did you decide about, is the dog a sign or not?
Yes.
The dog, yes. But though, they're, they're coming.
I mean, I'm just using them as an example because I, I watched the deal the other night.
Um, this goes into the definition of what the new ordinance would consider a window sign. A window sign would not be the window treatments, single-color blinds, curtains, shades that do not contain images or a message or window tint.
Yeah.
Some of the points of clarification that we've had ongoing conversations about concerning full window coverage, the current regulations and the proposed would still allow some windows to be completely covered by signage so long as the aggregate, the total area of that business's windows aren't, it does not exceed that 25%. Window coverings, the issue of blinds and shades and the use of OPEC material to cover windows. And then legal can expand on allowing window signs in residential areas. Our proposal to P&amp;Z and P&amp;Z's recommendation has, would prohibit window signs in residential areas. And then the way that we're looking at it is more commercial use of window signs. However, if legal wants to talk about the use of non-commercial signs in residential areas, then.
Sure. We just wanted to get clarification from Council as to whether Council desires to allow certain window signage in residential neighborhoods such as spirit signs and other similar non-commercial signs.
I have to take my Merry Christmas sign out, my woman?
That would be covered under the holiday decorations. We're thinking more of the school spirit signs such as for cheerleaders or for the bands.
I'm talking about liquor signs.
Yeah, or Little League, you know, Little League signs, things like that.
As, as written, the ordinance, or is drafted from P&amp;Z, the ordinance would prohibit those type of signs. That doesn't mean those type of signs need to be made a priority. But if there was, if there's desire to be an exception for those type of signs, those could be written into the ordinance.
I'm only saying that I think we oughta prohibit if somebody is advertising that business. Other than that, the schools and that type of stuff, we should promote that. I agree.
I don't have a problem with schools and sports.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Maybe limit it to the side.
They're pretty, yeah, they're pretty.
I'm not about a 36.
Same sign, political sign, I mean, I get the gracious.
But, yeah, I think those types of signs.
Jennifer, let me go back to the issue that the mayor raised on Petco. The treatment that they have now, the tint treatment that they have on all of theirs, would that be considered window signs or under this ordinance, would that not be considered a window sign?
The black treatment?
Yes.
The solid, no. The, the solid black treatment, no.
Okay.
The, but if they added graphics or messages to that treatment or.
Pictures.
Yeah, pictures, that would be considered a window sign.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that the treatment itself of the windows.
Yeah.
Because as we know, you know, that treatment really just covers, you know, you know, I guess walls from offices that you can't see through, I mean, you can't see into the building or, you know, their, their racks for the displays of all of their, their product, so, okay.
Are we making any differentiation between the retail and the office warehouse complex?
No.
Any even an office warehouse where the front office has zero people in it and nobody's coming in and all anybody, people in there are people that work? We are still limiting the 25% of window cover? They can't have blinds?
They can have blinds.
Yeah, the window signs. And that, that's a distinction that we want to make is that this, this requirement would, is just applied to signs, what's considered a sign.
So, they could have blinds covering their entire, everything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have the sign on the window.
But the treatment such as single-color blinds, curtain shades.
And these are pictures of businesses using the 25% aggregate window area. So, the picture on the, the right side, those windows are completely covered, but the front storefront is completely clear of signage. So, they can't cluster their window, their signs and graphics to completely cover some of the windows. The picture on the left-hand side, it's more evenly distributed along the storefront. But both of these would be compliant with the 25% of the aggregate window area.
So, 75% of the window.
Would be clear.
Would be clear.
Right.
How many businesses we got?
Well, 75, yeah. 25% can be covered.
Well, but of the total, the aggregate, 75% of the aggregate window area would be clear.
You know, was the 25% developed based on aesthetics and security that, you know, lack of security not being able to see into the store for our, for our officers or how did we arrive at the 25%, you know, or?
Existing. It's what we have existing.
Yeah, and I think we, we talked about a little bit of the origin at the joint meeting.
Both.
And talking about addressing some of the issues that we were having with businesses that stacked, whether it's merchandise or shelving up against windows. And so, the 25% threshold has been there to address situations like that so that it's not complete coverage. But I don't know if there's, I don't, I don't think there's like a magic study. It's really just what the community's preference is in terms of seeing, whether it's oversaturation or, you know, having some give and take in terms of the amount of signs on that, on the windows.
I would like to get a clearer understanding and I'm so proud of the citizens as well. What, what is the sign ordinance about? Why is it that we don't want all the signs covered?
All of the windows?
All the windows covered.
Well, in terms of totality, when you're looking at the space, the signs, signs play a very important role in terms of the character of a community and in terms of what, you know, you're allowing, whether it's monument signs, wall signs, you know, it, it changes the landscape of a community. So, it, it's part of that community character that defines that city.
So, it's no, it's not security involved in this?
In some cases, in some cases. Some cases it is.
Like the, the daycares, you know, that they, they actually don't want people to see in. So, they, I think, would be happy to have 25% and I'm sure they would actually want a whole lot more. But from that, I mean, but whereas other people I know have talked about police officers being able to actually see in. So, I think it's a security issue from both looking out and looking in.
When I go to a convenience store, I want to be able to see in it before I walk in it.
And, and this is, this is an example, like two daycares. Both, you can't see in, but they've done it in different ways. One put graphics on all of their windows. One is using blinds, which can be opened or closed according, you know, to what their, their needs are. So, they can approach it different ways. The one on top would be, you know, subject to the 25% if, you know, it's, if it meets the window sign definition. The one on bottom, you know, as they don't have signs, it's solid color blinds. So, it's, it's a treatment that they've added that wouldn't be subject to the sign regulations. So, there's, there's different approaches that they can take if, you know, it's, if it's an issue of safety or, or visibility. It doesn't have to just be the signs that they, they place on the windows.
But from what I understood, the 25%.
But from what I understood, the 25 percent is the existing requirement, and we're not changing that. It was just more of a clarification of really giving a definition of what a window sign is and that it's not just something on the outside or on the inside. It's both outside, inside, attached, or covering, or within three feet. And that it's also, like Jennifer said, not necessarily blinds or blackouts, but something with advertising pictures, messages. And so it was more just clarification. And then even when we met with the business community, we showed them different signs of less than 25, actually 25, and more than 25. And they were all in agreement that 25 is okay. They actually thought something more than 25 was excessive, and it looked cluttered, and it...
Yeah, and the distinction for them was understanding that it was based on the aggregate window area and not per window frame, yeah. And so, and that was part of their, you know...
Right, that you can cluster.
And we don't regulate the sign material.
And what?
Of the window signs, no.
So you can take some poster board and make your signs and just tape them up there, all kinds of ways.
And it's still subject to the 25 percent, but we're not, we don't have, there's not a proposal before you regulating that material.
And mayor and council, to expand on one thing, it does provide an exception that does allow more than 25 percent. So there is, there is one new component to it in addition to the clarifications. And you can see that at the bottom half of the slide, in which there's an allowance for in excess of 25 percent, provided that the businesses reduce their wall signage.
Right.
So that would be new. There could be an excess of 25 percent on windows.
We've also tied that to the use of changeable message signs. So if a business incorporates a changeable message sign, which can function similar to a window sign, that their total allotment for their window signage would be reduced by 10 percent. Or by 215 percent. Theater signs, it was mentioned earlier. We are providing with this ordinance baseline requirements on theater signs. That would include marquees, movie posters, that you typically associate with a movie theater or performing arts theater. And so the regulations would distinguish allowing, they would still allow movie theaters, performing art theaters to have window signs, like any other business, in the 25 percent, with the 25 percent cap. But would also allow them, where they want to place their movie posters, movie announcements, they would have a cap up to 50 percent to allow for the different size signs that are typical for those types of uses. And I know that there's a clarification that Leo wants to make with, in regards to the movie posters.
Sure, just two quick clarifications. One is that this is 50 percent in addition to the 25 percent that's already allowed. And the second is that, or just to find out from council, or to clarify, that those additional signs will be restricted to the now showing type of announcements.
Yeah. Okay, wall signs. This is our last sign category, I promise. Well, no, I can't promise, at least on our presentation. Wall signs, some of the major issues we were looking at were limitations on how we can compute sign area, increasing the square foot allotment per linear footage. Both of those would have the effect of increasing the allowable wall sign area. We also were looking at uniformity of signs between independent, signs on just an independent business establishment, and then signs within integrated business developments, and then the effect on redevelopment standards. And then also another issue were wall sign colors and the use of logos. So how we compute sign area now is we use a single geometric shape, which has the effect when you have various types of sign configurations, could include a lot of area that wasn't intended to be part of the sign, and then thus reduce the size of the sign. And so what we've included in this proposal is to use either single or multiple geometric shapes to help reduce, not eliminate, but reduce some of the area behind the sign that may not be part of the sign. Wall signs, this is just a very elementary example of what our current standards would be. The arrows distances show what would be the business frontage. And what our current standard is, is one and one-half square feet per linear foot of business frontage. We're proposing to up that to two square feet. And so that kind of shows you the effect that it would have on the wall signs. For instance, for this business going from 36 square feet to 48 square feet, which in numbers may not mean much, but when you see the visual representation, it's a bigger sign, is what they end up with. This proposal also includes allowing signs on sides of buildings and rear, the rear of buildings, and thinking about how some of our shopping centers are laid out with pad sites up front. And if you're internal to that shopping center and there's no signage on the rear, it can be difficult to figure out, yeah, what business is there. So this requirement would allow those businesses to place signage on the rear. That signage would be done at a rate of one square feet, one square feet per linear foot of the front.
Does it have or what the front?
Right, right. So they would, they would still have the ability to put signage, but not as big.
And that was our main concern, was that when you're in those parking lots behind them, you don't know which one of them is Radio Shack, which on the map.
Is that a change, or is that...
Yeah, it is a change.
Yeah, that's a change.
We'd never allowed that before.
That's a change. There are some, there are some cases where signage is allowed on the rear of a building.
Something didn't happen somewhere, because we had the discussion some time ago, and we did suppose they'd changed the ordinance to allow that to happen.
I think they've incorporated it into these changes.
Yeah, it's, it was allowed in certain...
I think this is the enactment of that council request. I think this is the enactment of that council request that's been...
And so we may not have been giving somebody something that we should have been given.
Yeah, but that...
It was allowed in certain areas as well.
Okay, I kind of remember that, because that was kind of my discussion.
Just wasn't being allowed in the areas where it should have been.
So we'll move to wall sign color. Staff has recommended to allow, continue the use of white letters for wall signs and increase the sign area for logos, trademarks, and service marks to 50 percent of the sign. So in the instance, we previously used the example of Subway, and so still going off of that example, where the entire sign might be the logo. But under this recommendation, the half of the sign is white letters, half of the sign would be considered their logo. And that would be consistent with the up to 50 percent. The two images on the top are from Missouri City Shopping Centers, and that's kind of how that concept is, looks in, on the ground. P&amp;Z, after much consideration before making their final report, has recommended to continue the use of white letters, but allow unregistered logos, trademarks, and service marks to consist of 50 percent of the sign, just like staff's recommendation. However, if the logo trademark or service mark is registered, P&amp;Z's recommendation includes to allow the entire sign to be that registered logo trademark or service mark. So that would be in the case of FedEx, in the case of Petco, Firestone, those signs that incorporate their colored lettering and their colored, whether it's, you know, in the case of Petco, cat and dog, to allow the entire sign area to be that logo or trademark. No discussion?
Are you looking for comments?
Well, that's, in the report is P&amp;Z's recommendation, so...
I do have a comment. Mayor, I think of all the members of the planning and zoning have done an outstanding job in coming up with this win-win solution, maintaining high standard for the city, yet given the flexibility for business owners. So I think this is a positive step, which go right in line with our city comprehensive plan, which is to create an image, positive image to the business and the development community, so, which lead to more businesses. So I think they deserve a big appreciation, man, seeing we don't have money to pay them. You say we won't do it. And that number one. And number two, I strongly recommend that we should meet with them at least once or twice. Because based on the meeting that, between city council members and planning and zoning members, we had a very highly interactive and productive meeting, man.
Yeah.
So that we will meet with them, it would be great.
Now, they've been putting in months of work, very good job. Where's Gary, is he still here?
Yes.
How are we going to enforce this thing? I mean, some of this, we got to where we worked, because there was not a lot of strong enforcement. And before you answer that question, you know, do, do, do we require sign permits? Or annual sign permits? I mean, some cities do.
We do not.
Okay, that might be something we want to...
Now, we do require a sign permit. I heard you ask, sign permits or annual sign permits?
I know we do originally.
Yes.
But we don't do annuals.
We do not do annual sign permits, no sir.
And, you know, and I don't know whether that can help with enforcement or what have you, but it's certainly a different kind of revenue, you know.
What would you be looking for with an annual? Where someone has changed the...
Has changed it, or folded it, then put it back upright, you know...
If you didn't, they can...
I think they change the...
Like us, we have to do that. City of Houston, every one of our banks has planned annual signs.
My church has to do it, all the churches have to do it. I didn't realize it until I was on the finance committee.
We'd go to every one of the shopping centers and make sure that all of those signs can farm.
Well, first off, first off, most places going volunteer and pay the...
But once it's up, you know, most of them, they're not going to, they're kind of going to move them or change them.
Yeah, but they're going to pay their annual fees and...
Kind of like an alarm's permit thing, you just... Something to look at.
Then, you know, if your concern is about when they make changes or modifications to the signs, or try to, but then perhaps we need to look at, they have to come in and get a permit at that point after they're making a certain percentage of change.
And if there's a structural alteration, they do have to come in for another permit.
Well, my point is, is that I don't want to ask them to do anything that they don't do some way else. You know, so if we're missing an opportunity here, and in overall concept of generating funds to operate the city, I think it's something we ought to look at. I mean, obviously they got to come back and...
The real price or sales side of the market, but as big as Houston is, you pay an annual sign permit.
That's right.
For every sign you have.
That's right.
When we come back for the second reading, we can always come in back...
It doesn't have to be a part of this ordinance, but it's something we...
They bill you just like you do an alarm permit, yeah.
And we could do just a survey of our benchmark cities and see kind of what's the going practice.
Yeah, so that, so that means every single owner that has a sign, they do it?
They pay the fine versus paying the fee.
Kind of like, don't we have a, don't we charge for a permit for elevators? Do we charge, do we have a fee for elevators?
Is that a state one or the state inspection?
That's a state reg, you do every year.
State regulation, we do it on alarms, we do it for health permits. There are a lot of annual fees, there are annual fees that we have, it's not unheard of.
About a city of Missouri City sticker that goes on elevators?
Don't believe so.
No, it's a state, it's a state.
The Houston does. Whether charged for it or not, you bet the city of Houston has their elevator inspection crew.
I hope we're better than Houston. Yeah, we don't have that type of inspection crew.
It's not, it's not being better than Houston, it's that these same businesses operate in Houston.
But what about, what about some of them that don't, that's not a national chain? That don't have it in, I mean, you know...
We can, we can survey and see what the response is. It is just... Maybe we can see what others are doing, yeah.
For having a business?
Yes.
For doing a business?
Yes.
I would, I would point that Jennifer, I believe, has one more slide to cover, and I thought I was called up here to answer a question about enforcement.
You answered it.
My view on enforcement is, we covered at the permitting period, if it's something that we regulated that in and we watch it. Although strangely enough, when I was in Corpus Christi, we found out that we permitted certain size signs on pylon signs. And while discussing with sign companies, it slipped out during one meeting that after they get it permitted, they know we don't have ladders to go up and measure. So they put up the size they wanted, a little bit bigger. So we have to watch things, and we do go out and check. I do know that Mr. McKiefer has required a bucket truck so he could go measure certain signs. We are a little structured, but really on the permitting and the front end is how we control a lot of the things that look very difficult to control. The hard ones for us are the back-end ones where there are no permits, where they're in people's yards, or where there are vehicle signs and the like. That's the hard ones to enforce, and that's where we have to have it written properly.
Or they take to the window in the store.
Do they change 60 percent?
Yeah, that's, that's always a challenge.
And you got quite a few of those.
We have a lot, and I'm pushing on the paper that's just covering it, because that's window coverage, and I know what council thinks.
Jennifer, you got one more slide, huh?
I have just a quick point of clarification. For, at least for non-conforming signs, changing letters is generally accepted, provided that the changing of those letters doesn't result in a structural alteration of the sign. And we've clarified structural alteration. And if council has an issue with this, please definitely let us know and we can change it. But a structural alteration is considered a change in the sign type, the sign encasement materials, the sign base, or the dimensions of a sign. And again, for non-conforming status, that's 60 percent of the cost. So if there's a change, or if the cost is 60 percent of the original cost to replace it, that would be considered a change.
So what did we determine about changing tiki to time?
And that would be, if, let's say, tiki was non-conforming, and the changing of the letters only...
And they kept it with the same letters, they just changed the last three letters?
Then they would be able to do that under non-conforming, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a structural, that wouldn't be a structural alteration.
There's a permit issued to allow the change. When I drove by the other day, I noticed it had not changed, unless my eyes were deceiving me.
But that, but what I'm asking is, it would be permissible for them to change IKI to IME?
Tiki's a legal sign, it's legal, it's not non-conforming, correct?
Yeah, I understand that.
So the reference that we just made was to non-conforming.
Oh, okay.
What's the practice with a legal sign?
Correct, for a legal sign, there just cannot be a structural alteration, which is defined as, it's, the reconstruction of 60 percent or more of the total existing sign structure. And a structural alteration is considered a change in the sign type, sign encasement materials, sign base, or dimensions of the sign.
I get, okay.
So that, the reference to changing letters is only in non-conforming, in that provision pursuant to state law. That's the only reason we have that there.
So what would be the, what would happen for the fun tiki signs since it is legal?
So for fun tiki, if it's less than 60 percent, then, I mean, they would be able to do it. They would be able to, I mean, they did change it to fun time instead of...
That's less than 60 percent.
It's a change that's less than 60 percent.
Correct, change two letters.
That's less than 60 percent.
60 percent of the sign area.
60 percent's, yeah, 60 percent's the threshold. Your last one is?
Last one.
You promise?
I, I, I promise, at least the slides, I promise. Temporary wall signs, just like we talked about with temporary monument signs, and allowing businesses that may be temporarily located in a leased space not to have to go through the expense of doing a permanent sign. And so we've, and P&amp;Z has proposed regulations for the placement of temporary wall signs. They can vary in materials elimination and construction, but uniform in the location, the height, and the depth. The color of the signs would be consistent with what you all proposed in terms of whether it's 100 percent the logo, registered logo or trademark, or 50, or white letters with 50 percent non-registered logo, trademark, or service mark. Was that clear?
So again, a political sign's exempt?
In a, in a temporary, uh, political office.
Campaign headquarters.
Campaign headquarters.
Provided, provided it conforms with the political sign requirements.
I mean, it can cover the whole window?
They can have, they can have a sign bigger than anybody's there, is what I understand.
Well, I guess it would depend on the other sizes of the sign.
It is regulated by the state though, right?
Right, 36.
Even the signs in those windows are regulated by the state, in a lease facility.
Let me just state that they're not regulated by the state. The state allows a city to adopt an ordinance regulating political signs that does not extend beyond those restrictions, and those are illumination, movement, size, height, and I think that's it, that's covered in the state statute.
But a place could move in, and the political signs could exceed the total sign requirements for the entire center by adding the political signs.
I would have to look at the numbers to see how that actually plays out, but...
But that's what happens.
If they're very small windows, I suspect that would be possible.
Take, take, take all of the footage for that center, and if all the other places have that legitimate signage, the temporary political place can move in and put up signs that exceed the requirement for the whole center.
And, and help me group, is there a, a giving of wall signage from one business to another in an integrated business development? So it's limited per business?
Can't spread it out over the whole sign.
Yes, you can't spread it out over the...
I understand that, but what I'm basically saying, in practicality, you could end up with all the signage, and then all this big signage that exceeds, because they could exceed what their requirement is, based on what you just told us earlier in regulating political signs.
So your question is, can you have your typical wall signage plus your political wall signage?
Yes.
I think the answer to that would be no, that you're still going, the political sign can potentially be over 25%, but you don't get to have your 25% political sign plus your other commercial wall signage. If you want to devote your 25% to your commercial sign, you can. If you have a small window, state law allows 36 square feet, you might exceed the 25%, but it doesn't allow you to have additional commercial as well.
So I can't tell them they can only have a 24 by 24 sign in their yard, but they can have all this signage in their business?
If we don't regulate speech.
And they can't exceed the, what we allow in our ordinance on the same basis why we can't tell them they can't have that certain size in their yard? That doesn't make any sense.
And there's, there's a limit under the state laws to 36 square feet.
Is that in the yard, or is that at the business?
That's anywhere on private property, not encumbered by a public entity.
So then our ordinance won't apply?
It, it would apply, it could not exceed 36 square feet.
Total.
Total.
Correct.
All of the signs added together. That's not per sign.
If we could, I would be glad to address this in executive session.
But we have some time to do that.
Yeah, we can...
Between now and next election, but it's gotten out of hand.
I may want a big sign.
Well, you can have one there, you can have a 36 foot, 36 foot sign in your front yard, year round.
Plus, we might even...
With a light on it.
And we may even let you wear one.
Yeah. And a truck.
Why wear one?
A van, a van with your name painted on the side of it.
That was it.
As long as it's not $6,000.
Thank you for putting up with all of this. Thank you.
I wanted to let you all know that...
Plus three flagpoles.
I won't be here at the next meeting for the second and final reading.
I bet.
By design, or what? Good move.
I'm moving out of state next week.
She just, yeah.
No, but I just wanted to thank you all for...
Kinda like throwing a hand grenade in and walking away.
So you're gonna commute every day?
Yeah, no, not from out of state.
Oh, man.
No, so tonight is my last night here, and I just wanted to thank you all for letting me come back.
Well, take this with you.
It's been a great pleasure to come back to the city as a private consultant, and I enjoyed my time as a city planner, and definitely enjoyed my time coming back on the private side, and everybody's been great to work with, and you have a great team, so...
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you, Karen.
Wait a minute, I don't know. It is a public hearing. Yes, sir.
I just want to let everybody know here, the council and so forth, and everybody else, the people that have worked on this project, our planning department, and all the other people that have been connected with this, this has been an 18-month project.
No, it's about a 10-year project.
It has not been an easy thing.
Well, and it's not finished yet.
But having looked at the sign ordinance for a lot of years now, I think all these people have done a fabulous job to get this thing up to where it is now. And I'm sure that next go around, you ladies and gentlemen will approve this thing, because we need to get it done. And, but anyway, I just want to make those comments. Gary, Gary, where are you? I did a great job of keeping it all together, Jennifer and Pyra, and Ejoyce, and everybody else that worked for this, thank you for all the hard work that you put in. I thank y'all for the comments.
We appreciate you.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
You first need to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Keep it on the same thing.
And then approve.
Move we close the public hearing and approve on first reading.
Second.
And there were several amendments that were discussed, as you're aware, the ordinance that you have represents the planning and zoning's recommendation to you. There were several recommendations by staff and discussion on council's part.
You kept note of all of them, right?
Well, I tried to, and I would like some backup on that as well from the, from Ejoyce, but I did start tabbing those, so... And I'm not sure that I knew whether there were...
Well, the staff recommended, well, noted, only the most of them.
And, and if the desire is to accept all the staff recommendations highlighted in red, I can go over those.
No, I...
Or not.
No, or not.
Okay.
Now, there were just some, like...
There was human signs we wanted to take it out.
That we eliminated completely.
Right, okay. So if we could go in order of this, I think that would facilitate it for me.
Okay.
The first that I have that was discussed was on page seven of the handout. Ejoyce, are you on the same pagination that I am?
I believe so.
Of the PowerPoint? Right. The first I have is a staff-revised recommendation, lighting should be shielded to prevent glare on drivers or onto residential properties.
Yeah, that's mine.
The second that I have is on page nine. Directional signs.
Yes.
This, the current, the current P&amp;Z provision allows for those signs where, or prohibits somewhere?
Prohibits them in suburban areas.
Okay, and this would allow those in suburban areas?
Correct, in all districts.
Yeah.
And then warning signs, the ordinance coming from P&amp;Z limited the warning sign to one, and this is moved to three?
Right.
Yeah.
Next, page 10, same lighting provision under sign lighting standards, lighting should be shielded to prevent glare on drivers?
Yes.
Okay. Then, moving down to that next one, the first one that I have is, that was discussed, was a potential extension to the contractor, residential contractor signs, from upon completion of construction to three days.
What page is that on?
It's page 10, the second slide, sign regulations.
Well, I think we said that some, some deed restrictions allow three days.
Right. Now, under this, under this circumstance, under our ordinance, if a deed restriction allowed it to three days, and ours allowed one, it would go to one or zero.
I know, it's fine, as long as they're within three days, one day, three days.
Three days is fine with me.
Yeah.
And Councilman Marshall, you're the mover? Is that correct?
I agree.
Second, second exception.
Okay, and I think we got first agreements and seconds on all of those. Human signs?
No.
There was a restriction from P&amp;Z's recommendation to one to zero.
Right.
I do not know...
We delete it?
Remove it?
Zero.
We want zero human signs.
Okay. I do not believe I've heard at this juncture a definitive recommendation on political signs, but we can of course address those at second reading. So we can leave this as is.
Educate us a little more.
I'm sorry?
Y'all gonna educate us a little more.
Okay, so we will leave as is, which is currently in conformance with not only our existing ordinance, but P&amp;Z's recommendation.
Yeah.
Ejoyce, anything else on, on those multiple portable sign discussions that you noted?
Not that I noted.
Other than vehicle?
Other than vehicle, which we will come back with additional...
And we discussed one vehicle?
Correct, for the for sale, for vehicles that are for sale in residential areas, you agreed to limit that to one?
One.
And you agreed to require that that vehicle is registered?
Be owned by the occupant of the home.
And can't be parked on the lawn.
That's, that's covered under another ordinance.
Did we clarify, though, if the home is owned by a business?
We didn't, we didn't clarify that. We just required...
I know of several in my neighborhood that the home is owned by a corporation.
And do they sell cars?
One of them, under that same name.
We just required that it had to be a resident of the home, the resident of the property.
The resident is the owner of the corporation, that has the house, and...
But if they only have one, are we concerned about?
No, if it's, that's what I'm saying, even regardless of who...
Right. Regardless of who owns it, we're limiting it to one.
Limiting it to one, that's kind of what I was getting to.
Would you want to change that from resident to something else?
Are they constantly having a car for sale on the...
They bring it about four months.
The deed restriction don't prohibit him from operating a business in the neighborhood?
Now, we have a home occupation ordinance, so...
Operating.
And I do know we have worked on and prosecuted home occupation cases that are similar to what you've just described.
We talked about this.
Yeah, we have ordinance that says he can't run that business out of that house.
Now, this would affirmatively allow one car to be there year round, correct? Or did we make an amendment to modify that?
That's in a lot of the HOAs.
That's what they made to modify that.
It's not an HOA, we have an ordinance that you can't run a business out of.
At any one time, the dealer could have one car.
And under this ordinance, he could have a different car every day?
Correct.
And it would be marked for sale?
Just can't be but one.
Couldn't be more than one. It'd have to be registered to that homeowner, which could be a business.
Hey, let me make, what if it doesn't have a for sale sign on it, but it's got a dealer plate?
That would not be covered under this ordinance, because it wouldn't be a sign. But that would, that would be impacted by home occupation.
The same process is happening, they're still for sale.
Right, in that circumstance, I would like to investigate that for a potential home occupation, but that wouldn't be covered.
At least on this ordinance, put limited to one, that's fine.
Okay. And any concern with that one, or a series of one, being there 365 days a year? That's P&amp;Z's recommendation to clarify?
There were no limits.
There were no limits, so I could have 12 cars over a period of a year.
Well, then, couldn't we, then would we not consider that a business, then?
We would, we would have to look at that. Home occupations are allowed one car at a time.
I know that, but if they're selling that many cars and bringing on, that's a business.
And attracting traffic.
If the ordinance is creating a problem for that, we can bring the ordinance back and amend it to, to do what we can to eliminate that issue for...
And we can think about it between nine and next reading.
Yeah.
Granted them.
And what other ones?
Just quickly on vehicle signs, were you all okay with changing the exceptions to affirmative defenses to enable prosecution? Any potential exceptions, instead of using them or describing them as exceptions, changing them to affirmative defenses?
Yes.
That addresses residential vehicle signs. I think quite a bit was discussed for commercial vehicle signs, and all that's being just brought back with maybe some alternative language, so no changes.
Is there any stuff on page 13?
Yes.
Okay.
So no change, you won't see any changes in your ordinance, but you'll see some other options.
Okay.
And I don't think I had any notes on the increases to wall signage, the exceptions. Those acceptable.
With the P&amp;Z and staff recommendation?
Only other one I had was the clarification about movie theater signs, just adding that those addition, the additional signage is limited to information about showtimes.
And in all honesty, I do think that was P&amp;Z's recommendation, that they did not intend for that to be other type of advertising, but limited to current and future attractions.
Okay.
How about page 21? There's a difference between staff and P&amp;Z.
On the registered versus the...
Yeah, registered versus the unregistered.
I think we have to...
Mine was one with the P&amp;Z recommendation.
Well, that's mine also, but we made the comment, it was staff, we'd go with staffs, except for certain situations. And to me, this is one of those situations.
My motion was including P&amp;Z's recommendation on this, the 50% unregistered to 100% registered.
Which would not necessitate an amendment, because that's the ordinance, that's encompassed in the ordinance.
That's all I got.
I think that's articulated, all those amendments will be incorporated for second reading, and it appears that both the mover and the secondor have agreed to those amendments as articulated.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
My motion is articulated.
There was a motion and a second.
My motion is articulated.
Yeah, it's articulated. A motion and second, although it's in favor. Motion's carried.
We'll bring you back a changes mark that highlights those changes.
Speaking of signs...
Yep.
An ordinance, the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending regulations in PD Plan Development District Number 62, consisting of an approximate 20-acre tract of land, describing said 20-acre tract of land, regulating and restricting the use size, height, and density of buildings, the size of yards, and type of use within such PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number 0811, adopted on January 19, 1981, as amended repealing ordinance number 0112, adopted on February 7, 2011, providing a penalty, providing for several bounty, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, this is an amendment to the current Plan Development District ordinance that governs the Petco, as well as Fort Bend Town Center, located at Highway 6 and Knights Road, otherwise known as the, the future Fort Bend Toll Way. Currently, there are some access roads there, but that is slated for the future. At this time, Petco is requesting three...
Or...
I'm sorry. Yeah, four specific deviations to the current sign program that is incorporated by the Plan Development District ordinance. The first request that they have made is to deviate from the current uniform wall sign design program that is currently utilized at Fort Bend Town Center. That current uniform design program is actually white face letters with a small amount of shadowing around it. It's essentially just a slightly bolded letter around it, around the, the current channel letter. They would like to deviate from that. Here's an aerial map. All right, here are some site pictures of the Fort Bend Town Center. And they are actually located, if you're looking at the, the drawing here in red, they're actually at the very end. There is a small lease space that is actually at the hard corner there, so they kind of So they kind of take up an L that is more of an acute angle than a regular L. This is what they're proposing. They would, they would like, instead of utilizing the current sign design program with whiteface channel letters, they would like to incorporate red channel letters. As well as the, you can see on here, they would like to put a blue aluminum backer panel behind two of the signs. One being on the grooming in front, and then the second being on the Petco, which would actually face the future Fort Bend Town, I'm sorry, the future of Fort Bend Toll Road. The second deviation they're requesting is to actually utilize the red lettering with the logo. The current requirement is, in order for them to utilize the logo, the lettering would have to be whitefaced. And so in this case, they're requesting to have red lettering and the logo as well.
Does that comply with what we just did?
If they were able to show us that that is their, their registered trademark logo, then yes, that would then be acceptable at that point. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I don't have problems with request one, two, and three, but how does the Town Center feel about, number one, about changing the current uniform signage?
Sure. Town Center has, as part of the Plan Development District application process, submitted to us on our authorization letter stating that they, as well as all other owners within the Plan Development District, are okay with the requested changes. And they have signed off on those and told staff that they are, they don't have a problem with that.
Letter from the?
They should be in your package. Yes, sir.
Is there any rendering showing how the proposed deviation is compared to the existing?
Yes, the existing, and we actually were just able to get these photographs earlier today.
And again, how does this compare to what we just passed? If it were today?
I think one, two, and three, if they were doing this after we passed, that one would be.
That's all I.
It's number four that's the problem.
Yeah. So the current wall signage that they have does incorporate the whiteface letters and the, and the red and blue dog and cat logo. At this point, they're requesting to change all the lettering faces on there to red from this current white. And they would like to reposition the logo so that it's on top of the Petco as seen here.
Okay.
So those would be the major changes. And quickly, this is just a photograph of the side that faces Fort Bend, the future Fort Bend Toll Road. So essentially, the only real change as far as the current signage goes is to turn the, the white channel letters into red channel letters to incorporate that blue aluminum backer panel. And to slightly rearrange the, the current organization of the Petco logo and sign that, that's over their entryway.
You said this is facing the future of Fort Bend Toll Road?
Yes.
Yes, this would be facing the future of Fort Bend Toll Road. Yes, sir.
On the south.
On the end?
Yes, sir. There is a tiny end cap in there. I'm not sure what the, what the leasable area is there. It's rather small, though. That is the only area that they don't incorporate on that side.
Do they have, do they have an official logo?
Yes, they do.
To our knowledge, this is the official logo.
On red, done.
But that's not what's going to be on the side, is it?
That's what they.
No, what they're, this is what's currently on the side, what they're proposing.
While Travis is making the change, when I went out and looked at it, what is being referred to as the side, I would call the back of the building. It primarily faces the access way for the trucks to get to the Kroger. There's nothing beyond the curb but high grass because it is the course for the future parkway. There's very little parking at, at that point. The side, which faces more parking, is the end cap that's empty right now. So this is really the back wall of the Petco building. It's, it's odd. It's not square. It's a little bit triangular, but this is really the back wall.
So are they trying to publicize themselves to the, to the flyover of the toll road? Because I'm not sure they know this yet, but the toll road will be past your store before you can get off of it. It's not going under anymore. I'm not even sure the tenants in that shopping center are that aware of it, but the toll road is not going under Highway 6 anymore. It will go over Highway 6 and will be past that shopping center.
And the elevation might be.
When it exits.
Elevation.
You will be able to see that shopping center much better than what you would have had it gone underneath 6.
Yeah.
But won't there be feeders?
No.
Feeder roads?
No, there are no feeder roads. Toll road, all the way to Santa Parkway. So when you come up Santa Parkway, you will have to get off, Santa Park, you'll have to get off the toll road. At 6, and U-turn to get back into that shopping center. Matter of fact, you cannot, you will not be able to access the parking ride from that toll road. You'll have to, you will have to access the new parking ride from Highway 6.
That's where we went today.
So I'm not sure these guys even know that, so I don't know what purpose they're going to go to the expense of sticking that sign on the back of a building.
Well, the, the, the whiteface sign actually already does exist, so they.
I'm not worried about that. I'm just talking about the backside. What?
Well, currently, there is a sign.
But I'm saying, I don't know what the, I don't know what the purpose is in changing it.
I could not speak to that.
Are they here?
Yes, the applicants are on the audience today.
You're going to be past it.
Sure. And they, and they can speak to that.
Yeah.
I'll let them.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Jay Sears. I'm one of the partners of New Quest Properties, one of the landlords of the Fort Bend Town Center of Petco. First of all, let me, let me take a minute to applaud your staff on the efforts that you've taken with, with the sign ordinance. We, we, they pulled us in and several members of our industry in probably about a year ago and, and sought our input. And I will tell you, what they've proposed for, to you is really monumental. And, and it, it is really what we're talking about tonight. You know, Petco is a national retailer. They've been a, both a client of ours and a tenant of ours for 20 years. And Petco goes to, to large expense, they have over 1,000 stores nationwide, to market on TV, market on the internet, a logo that they want you to recognize. And I think you saw a photo of how a white sign on a white background is not visible. And you have the ability to position Missouri City in a way to, to be competitive against both Sugar Land, where they're all a nice sea of white letters that you can't see, and, and position yourself against the internet. You know, the internet is your competitor. It's my competitor. We operate six and a half million square feet of shopping center space in the Texas Triangle. And I will tell you, we look at trying to make our centers and our tenants as competitive as they possibly can be. Because if not, if they're not, if they're not convenient, if they're not accessible, if they're not visible, then our residents, our customers will go to the internet. They'll order it, UPS will drop it at their door, and they'll never have to grace the doors of the people that pay you taxes every day and pay me rent. It's a whole lot cheaper to operate on the internet than it is to operate from a bricks and sticks store. So what Petco's, you know, we've gone through a two-year process of proving up this site for Petco. Petco came and, quite honestly, with the, the signage that they were forced to put up per your ordinance, their sales suffered. They had a very, very soft opening. If the sales are to continue at this level, they may not serve out the term of their lease. So signage is important. They need to be visible. We have a PD that we executed with your city when we built the shopping center and agreed to, you know, white letters with a touch of, touch of color. I think what your new ordinance proposes is much more positive, and I wish that it had been in place when we built the shopping center. In regards to the sign that is, that is facing the tollway, Mayor, I am aware of the potential for the flyover. And there is potential that it's not going to fly over.
Oh, I can tell you, it's definite. It's going over.
We're still talking, so.
Oh, it's going over.
But in either case.
Get ready.
In either case, if you desire, if you are headed south on the Fort Bend Tollway, and you desire to stop at Kroger and our shopping center, and Petco in this case, you'll exit at Highway 6, and you'll continue at grade, and you'll go into our shopping center. And then when you want to head south to Santa Plantation, you'll, you'll get back on the on-ramp. As you are there on that side, you will see this sign. This is the side of the building. It is not the back of the building. It is the side of the building. And when, if, if you are flying past this shopping center on your way to work in the morning, and you look over, you will see this Petco sign. So it's, it's a very important sign. The red sign with the blue background is, is again their logo. They want you to understand that this is a Petco. I think you saw the white letters. They're not visible.
Jay, why wouldn't Kroger want their sign on the side of that building?
Oh, Kroger'd love to have more signage.
So why wouldn't they fight to have it there instead of Petco?
Well, it's not their building. I mean, this is, this is Petco's building, and, you know, Kroger is in their spot.
And their lease is not their building. They lease it from you, so.
I'm sorry?
They lease it from you.
Oh, they do lease it from us, but Petco, Petco leases this space. This is their space. There's one notch out of the space that is the end cap, but this is a, this is a big part of it. While I'm up here, let me address the fourth, fourth number, fourth exception, which is the window signage. I understand, I, no one, no one dislikes excess window signage any more than me. We regulate it in our leases. We, we, we look at it. We look at what is tasteful, and we approve what we think is tasteful. We disallow what we think is not tasteful. This is a unique case in where the space that Petco has leased from us was not designed for a tenant the size of Petco. Petco doesn't need window signage on the side of their building. They, they drive all the traffic through the front door, and they really don't utilize a great deal of, 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 of glass. In this case, we've got glass going down the side of this building. And the alternative is that you can, we can put up, Petco can put up black tinting in the windows, which I think looks more obtrusive or obnoxious than, than signage of dogs and cats, which, which are very friendly. That, you know, I think will be a much more pleasant look than, than black signage. So that's, that's the nature of their request. It's what to do with that. It, it can't be ripped out. We don't, you know, we don't want to go in and rip out the, all the glass that was put in there. But it's merely, I think, a more tasteful way to, to address that glass. Thank you all.
Did we do, so, did they do a recalculation of, I think it, right now, it, it was set up that it was 70% of the, of the window space?
Yes.
Is that right?
And that.
Did they do a recalculation, or did we rather?
Yeah, and that, that is correct. What, what they were showing and what their window signage is actually covering up are the areas where that shelving is located on the other side, where you, you truly would not be able to see into the building anyway because there's shelving and, and some drywall that's there blocking your view. So they had the option of either doing window graphics like this, or they could just put up black paling or something like that, or else we'd just be looking at essentially the, the back of a wall.
And this is strictly on the windows that face night right now?
Uh, there will be some signage that's also on the front as well. There will be signage utilized on the front.
Is, is the side that's facing night right now, is that the side that has drywall and shelving currently?
I want to say, except for their front doors, pretty much all windows in there, I believe, have shelving all the way around it.
Side, yeah. When we looked at.
Okay, but, but what we're calling the front, which faces Highway 6, is that right?
Yes.
Is there any shelving or sheet rock or anything else inside of those windows?
Yeah, I believe so, and that is where they're proposing to have some of the window signage as well. So there will be window signage, there is window signage proposed for both the front and the side slash rear.
So my understanding, I thought that when we looked at the total window space that's there, which is even above where the signage was, that was window space also. And when you took that into consideration, that it would reduce that 70% down to some other number?
That actually was taken into consideration when staff did the original calculations. All windows that are on their lease space were taken into account when we did the total for that.
And you still come up with 70%?
Sir.
Okay.
And that, that includes these areas that you can see above the canopy.
That's what I was talking about.
Clearly, there's no, right, that was all taken into account when we did the original numbers before the Plan Zoning Commission meeting. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the 70% is what is already being blocked?
It is what is.
It's all blocked now, yeah, with.
Shelving and.
Shelving, backing of shelving.
Right, and a film that's actually on the window, so you don't actually see the shelving, so they are.
Just clarifying.
Locking that out.
There's intent on it already.
That's correct.
But the tinning is not counted as?
No, that's why I asked that question earlier.
The tinning is not part of the signage.
Well, if you may use graphics, then it becomes a sign.
Exactly right. And then you open it up.
One thing is, is that, maybe this is why we do have PDs. So when we run into these kind of complicated issues, we can be able to make the adjustments to make the whole project work. Because this is not just about that one location. It's about what affects that whole center, in, in, in my estimate. And, and I'm, I'm going to move that we approve this, including item four, as it specifically relates to this PD and doesn't apply to anybody else.
I'll second.
Well, I think we have to make that clarification, otherwise we just go back and redo it. That's what we did about two hours talking about.
Can you show the front?
Yes.
Also?
Are you going to have everybody else asking for the same thing?
Can I, can I interrupt just for a second? What's coming around are some options. Option one, that Petco went back and revised based on some of the comments from the PNC meeting, and we can put them on the screen.
Where the, where the dog and the dog and the lady are, behind that is drywall.
Yeah, the difference there is the, the messaging, the words have been taken out, so the graphics just consist of the images of the dogs and the different animals.
Yeah. And like I said, and behind that is really is drywall.
What, in this third picture.
What about the?
What about the branding up at, up top, the signage?
That's, that's all of the.
Is that, is that part of the option as well?
Yeah. That's the back of all the shelving, yeah. So, you know, that's, that's nothing but shelving. You take those down.
When they put a laminate on it. Yes.
So that you couldn't see the back.
On the second page where you have the.
PD. I'm sorry.
No, you're all right. The, the Petco with the, the, the red and blue dog and cat, that's an option, right? Okay. With, with the Petco being white.
Here, here, yes.
Yes, okay.
But that's not, that's not, that's not what they're asking for. They're asking.
No, but this, they're not here that this is, this is an addendum here, and they're giving us some options? I think they're showing, just for the window covers.
For the window covering, I think, done.
Tell me what this is about.
That is just, just superimposing the graphics on the windows. The, the signage is just taken from what's up there right now.
Oh, okay.
So that's not part of this exhibit that you have in your hands. That is not what we want.
So, so the two-picture options are for just the window covering?
Yeah.
So if we put the red, your, your original brand with this sign, with this right here, then that would be, that would be an option to you, right?
Yes. Well, we tried to do, from Planning and Zoning, had concerns about the training and grooming copy and some other copy that was on the side. So we eliminated that and just went down to just straight graphics, just photos in the windows.
In, in addition to the first picture?
I'm sorry, yes, that would be the front. The second picture would be alongside.
The window covering.
As Councilman Wyatt said, this is an unusual location. This is a PD. I have, I have no problem with this at all.
It wouldn't happen if it wasn't in a PD.
And these graphics here is what it would look like?
Correct.
And make sure you put the snake or lizard on there. I really like that. And make sure you get the snake or lizard on there, I really like that.
And these are, these are in the same locations that are currently black, or had graphics previously.
You still making the same motion?
I'd rather look at these pictures than to look at that blank wall. I'll be honest with you.
Well, this also shows that it's occupied. You try to see the block up there, you don't know if there's anyone in that, that particular--
And, and, and exceptions should be few, and this would be an unusual exception in an ordinance, in a, in a PD that allows you to do that.
You still good with your second?
I made the motion, we had a second too.
Quick, quick point clarification. So, with what we're approving here now, are we approving what they're showing here as this option, or what they originally had proposed that actually had lettering in, in these graphics?
Maybe I don't remember the lettering.
That's why I asked. If they're using the brand with these options that they gave us. In other words, the red Petco--
What lettering, what lettering are you talking about?
I think we're approving ones, two, and three, and now four.
On just the wall signage? It appears--
Well, it's my understanding that four is, is the option that they're presenting now, though.
That's right, that's number four is the window--
From the, some partial picture, partial words to all pictures for the wall signage.
Yes, we got that part of it, we just, now we're just trying to determine what the signage is up here.
Yeah, and that's, that's technically not an exhibit, but he's requesting that it be read.
In, in this picture, the little words up here say Petco. It's not intended to be as the part of example for the windows.
Right.
Correct, yes.
And we're going to see red, white, and blue Petco, or whatever colors you got on there, red and blue.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
That was the original--
That was deviations one, two, and three.
Right, right. That, the, the red lettering, the blue aluminum backer panel, and also the increase in square footage from what would be allowed. Those were the three first ones. The fourth deviation they're seeking is actually to the window signage.
And you also repositioning the dog and cat up, up at the top.
Right. Which, which really wouldn't be outside of what we would allow. They're just, just, yeah, they're just wanting to do that.
I'm not seeing that slide from my computer.
Um--
In here? In my package.
Just give you this.
Now, what, what, the original that we're now changing to this?
Mr. Mayor, let's vote, because it's getting late.
I have no problem. Your motion is to include this as item number four, right?
Yes.
Second?
I'll vote.
Who was the second?
Uh, Don.
We're good.
Okay, and that, that was for allowing wording on the windows as well?
That's not what's right here. What was presented? What's presented?
Exception number four.
These pictures, and I like the lizard.
Exhibit one.
You should have had snake.
All right, been a motion and second. All those in favor?
Who made the motion, Mayor?
I did. Smith.
Second.
Smith made the second.
Yes.
All right.
I gotta take a break.
Thank you, and generate those sales.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Problem was done.
All right, you can take a break. Seven B.
Seven B one, an order of the City Council of City of Missouri City, Texas, finding declaring that the building and structures located at 3202 Confederate Drive in City of Missouri City, Texas, to be public nuisances and ordering the repair or alternatively the demolition and removal of the building and structures, and providing for several building. And-- Mayor and Council, if I could, as a very preliminary matter, very quickly, you will see a new face before you tonight. That is Trisha Dang. She is the new Assistant City Attorney and City Prosecutor. She--
Yes?
Okay, thank you. She comes from several other previous jurisdictions. She served as prosecutor, as police legal advisor, as fire legal advisor, and we are fortunate to have her here.
All right, very good.
Welcome.
I was on my far back just a minute ago.
Where is she?
Get it on, let's go. What are we doing here? She's hiding back there?
If, if I may.
There she comes. Here she comes, Gary.
We, Gary, you got control of that stuff out there?
I can handle it for me, I know, I know he can see ahead of me. We, we have a house at 3202 Confederate that we show the owners, Antoinette Johnson, the lien holders, as Everhome Mortgage Company. On February 3rd of this year, it was struck by lightning, and a fire resulted in causing significant damage. And the damage is obvious in the four photos in the next slide. Roof is gone, most of the second floors are gone. On March 2nd, Dale Wells, our chief building official, inspected the premises and determined that it was substandard. I have slides that outline the basis for it being substandard. Up until, well, today, I found out it was no longer open for unauthorized entry. It has been boarded up, at least the first floor, the, the second floor still is in the damaged condition it was in. But it's dilapidated, substandard, unfit for human habitation, a hazard to public health, safety, and welfare due to the fire damage to the roof, first and second floor throughout the structure. It's missing the floor, ceiling, and roof framing, and is allowing full exposure of the structure interior. High winds could cause it to collapse. It's open and conducive to harboring of rats, snakes, mice, other disease-bearing animals. It's subject to collapse or losing materials that could cause injury. Summary, severe damage leaves it in an unstable condition. And the next slide will show you the condition that it existed on May 11th. On, on May 23rd, we posted the notice of this hearing, and we mailed it, we also published it, and we mailed it to the lien holders and the parties in interest. And our recommendation, based on all of that, is to secure the property from unauthorized entry. If council will adopt an order, ordering the owner to commence repairs within 10 days and complete the repairs within 30 days. Allow lien holders and mortgagers to commence repairs within 40 days, or complete, and complete them within 60 days, assuming the owner does not, if that does not happen, to give the city authority to demolish and remove the improvements if the property is not repaired. Gentlemen here--
How do you board this house up for unauthorized entry? How do you do that?
The, the only way to do it is to board the, the ground floor windows. There's really no way to secure it from unauthorized entry if someone has a ladder or access above that.
My question is, can it even be reconstructed? Are you the owner?
Yes, sir.
Why have you let this happen?
My name is Alejandro Suniga. I own FIG Construction Firm, and I own FIG Investment Firm. We purchased the property from Ms. Antoinette on May 7th.
This year?
Yes, sir. After it was burnt out. We buy distressed properties throughout the Houston area, and we rebuild them back to their normal state. This current property was bought by my company, and, and we're, our plans are to start the rehab on the property to make it look back the way it was before the fire. This is not the first fire-damaged home we've bought. We do it throughout Houston, throughout spring, the Woodlands. It can be rebuilt, and it will be rebuilt if you guys allow me to rebuild it. It will be rebuilt to its original condition before the fire on February. We did board it up once I purchased the property. We boarded it up so nobody can get in the building. It wasn't boarded before, before we purchased it.
How quickly can you reconstruct it?
It would take me about eight, eight weeks.
Starting when?
I am going to start on this project in about three weeks after I get a project done that I'm doing in the medical center. So, it's next on my list to do.
So, are you going to have to tear this down, or are you going to start from where this, where you're over here?
I don't, I will, I will not tear down, I wasn't going to tear down any of the walls. I was going to bring in my framers, and we're going to frame out the structure, which is mainly, what's gone is the rafters. The walls will be framed out also. Once the rafters go on, the, the roof goes on, and then it, it's a structural building again. I've been in the building a couple of times. I purchased it. I walk all the buildings. It can be done, I've bought worse in the city of Houston.
So, when do you think you will show signs of rehab in this thing, this place?
I, I should be started on it here in three weeks. I have another project in the medical center that I'm completing now. And as soon as that's done, we're coming over to 3202 Confederate. And, and as soon as we get in there, if you give me about six weeks to eight weeks, the property should look back to its original state.
So, when the, so when this picture was taken, it wasn't boarded, now it is?
Yes, sir. When that picture was taken, I wasn't the owner. After I became owner of the property, I boarded up the property for that reason, so that it can be safe for, so people cannot get in. The second level was not boarded up, but I mean, if you're going to get in there, you're going to need a ladder.
So, what's the action, Mayor, of this?
Well, I, I want to ask, in, in the opinion of our, of our city, who's going to be inspecting this booger?
Yes, sir.
Can it be reconstructed?
Uh, the property can, the property can be reconstructed. We would need to have an engineer's report to start with, saying what can be salvaged with it. Because of the extreme fire and heat to it, one of the biggest problems is cracking and deterioration of the concrete itself. If, if an engineer was to give us a report saying it could be salvaged, we could proceed with that. We would need to have a complete set of plans for what they're going to reconstruct.
So, are you, are you capable of getting an engineer's?
Yes, sir. The, the fire was mainly on the second floor, because lightning struck the rooftop. So, the foundation's in good condition. It did burn down, the rafters burned down. So, it was never, the fire really never hit the second floor.
Are you, are you familiar with what he's saying? And are you in a position to get an engineer's report before you start?
Yes, sir. Yes, and it's going to, we're working with the, the builder of the home. I'm going to get the plans from that, and all permits, and everything would be done in accordance to you guys' ordinance.
Let me paint, let me paint a picture for you. If you go and put all the investment into this, and then, and you get it back to where you think it is, and that guy there says it's not up to standards according to the city, your investment kind of--
I mean, I, I understand that, but I, what I'm saying is that I'm, I will do the rehab.
Are you working with him to?
I have not as of yet, because I haven't started the project. But when I start the project, I will start putting permits in accordance to--
Rehabilitate this thing and bring it back to, to just standards, but there's, there's a certain bit of coordination has to go along with this guy right there next to you.
He, I'll get to know him throughout the rehabbing of the property.
Okay, so what is our action here? To allow him to--
Yeah, my recommendation, Council, given the, the relatively recent change of ownership, is to direct him accordingly, based on the information that he's provided, to request that this be reset to another hearing, to give him an opportunity to produce that information to the city, and for us to be able to incorporate that detailed plan in the order.
Okay.
So, in the event that he does not repair or alternatively demolish that, that detailed plan will be in part of the order, and then the city could act accordingly if, if necessary.
Yeah.
Will our engineer's report--
Yeah.
Give further information other than just the foundation? Because foundation may be okay, I just don't think the rest of the house is okay.
The engineer report would have to look at all structural members existing, and what can be salvaged, what needs to be removed. That would have to be addressed in the--
No, that's fine. I just didn't want it to be limited to--
Correct.
Foundation problems.
That was a pretty intense fire.
If you remember, that, just as a side, that's the one where the, the battalion chief went in and found a ring of the lady. She had lost it, left her ring in, in there and lost it. And he went through the, the ashes and found her wedding ring for her.
It was the thunderstorm that the light--
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Smith, and a, and a second by Councilman Marshall, to set this for a later hearing, is that right?
Yes, sir. We expect to bring it back to council on July, at the meeting on July 2nd, which will give you the three weeks to get something started, so by that time--
Yeah, well, you can get with them, find out what's required of you, and start that paperwork going, because, yeah. I mean, all of us want to see the house taken care of, so whatever we can do to help you.
Well, thank you very much, and it, it's going to be restored to its original state if you guys allow us to do it.
We'd love to see you do it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Some more. All those in favor? Motion carried.
Raise your hand, sir.
Be two.
An ordinance of City of Missouri City, Texas, continuing Article 7 of Chapter 74 of the Missouri City Code, continuing the rules and regulations pertaining to the standards of care for certain elementary-age recreation programs operated by the City of Missouri City, repealing all their ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for several building.
I'll move to a doubt.
Motion by Smith, second by who? Councilman Wynn? All those in favor? Motion carried. Item 8 or no appointments, item 9 authorizations. Item 9A is to consider authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement for additional law enforcement services between Fort Ben County Precinct 4, Minnesota Utility District Number 115, and District Number 129.
So, move.
Why, why did this come to us, is the question?
As you can tell, Mayor and Council, the city is not a participant in this contract, and has no obligations or rights, but they do require city consent, as part of this is in the city jurisdiction.
Who requires?
Jurisdiction, yeah.
The other participants, the districts and Fort Ben County.
They have no jurisdiction over us, though, do they?
No.
They, before they start taking this action within the city limits, they want the city to consent to it.
I've never known any other constable's office to ever ask for the city permission.
I don't, I'm not aware, and the, the chief or police can correct me if I'm wrong, if we have any other structures such as this in the city. I'm aware of it existing in another adjacent city, but I don't think we have increased law enforcement services under a contract like this with the district and the county.
We do, actually, in Councilman Marshall's area. Yes, we do.
The district is government-owned, just like the city, who could enter in this local agreement without us. Now, if this is a matter of letting us know that this is happening, that's one thing, but asking us to approve it--
They have specifically requested our consent, and I believe, was the letter attached in there, in the packet?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Well, the request is all right, it's just the idea of making it, bringing it to the council. I don't see how that--
I just never seen that happen.
You know, I don't see where the jurisdiction lies.
And I guess the conversation's more for the future than it is on this one here, because, I mean, if, if the, if the utility district was asking to go out to sell buns, yes, they have to come and get our consent, but beyond that, they don't need our--
Did this come from the district, or from the constable's office?
I believe the constable's office was the one that initially submitted it to us.
Maybe Fort Ben works different than here's, but--
This was the first of such I'd been involved with, so I--
The mayor's paying for it, are they not?
Correct.
Correct. Like a contract.
And I don't want, you know, something to happen, somebody comes and says, well, y'all approved it. I mean, so, you know, you can have some political side effects from this.
We're, we're consenting to it.
Yeah.
But again, no rights nor obligations for the city pursuant to this contract.
I think the wording should have been, we acknowledge that they're doing it.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we should be part of--
That we consent, that we acknowledge that they're doing it. There's a difference.
Let me look at the signature page on there.
Signature page had a spot for the mayor at the bottom.
I mean, I can change my motion and say that the mayor's acknowledging that this is taking place, and we don't, you just have to change the agreement.
It sure looks like we're a party. It's got Fort Ben County, the, the utility district, and the city, all on the same page.
It indicates that, that the city is executing it, but again, they're, they're not a party. The only reference, I think, to the city is, is the submission to the police department of certain types of felony reports.
But it says the party, the parties put their hands to this agreement.
I, I could make a note that on here of, of no objection or consent as to form above, above that--
Yeah.
Prior to your signature, Mayor, to confirm that we're not a party.
Can we remove it from the agenda?
We could reset this for another, you could either vote against it, or we could reset it for another occasion to get more information.
Is the recommendation that we send it back to, and have them rework it?
Yeah.
And bring it back to you?
And then we can incorporate them of--
Well, let's, I mean, we, let's, let's not even have to worry about bringing it back to them. It, we'll take it back to them and say, look, the council's not comfortable with entering into agreement--
into agreement, go ahead and just do the services you're currently providing, see where we go, and no action needs to be taken by council at all.
Yeah, it doesn't include us, you know.
I would draw my motion.
Well, maybe I'm not understanding, because there's even an article, Article fourteen, about third-party approval.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's what they're talking about us, they're-
Yeah, they're not part of the certification.
They're saying that it's subject to our approval, and it's not.
And we become a party to it. So, let's say-
But there are no obligations or rights, other than there is a, well, I guess there is a right in that they will give reports to the chief, but I believe we had a conversation, and he indicated those reports would have been supplied, outside of the-
But I don't think that Article fourteen should even be included.
Why don't we just go with what the city manager just recommended, that eliminates all of this?
I would draw my motion, so we don't worry about that.
That's right, you did.
Did I second it?
Yeah, you seconded it.
I would draw my second.
Okay, all right.
And we take no action and do what the city manager said.
Nine B, consider authorizing execution of interlocal operation, cooperation agreement for regional water treatment, plant operation, and maintenance services, is there a motion?
Some of them.
Second.
Motion by Counselman Marshall, second by Counselman Emery, there's no discussion, we vote all those in favor, motion carries. Nine C, consider authorizing the execution of interlocal cooperation agreement for water, wastewater, and stormwater operation and maintenance services, is there a motion?
I move.
Counselman Emery made the motion, Counselman Marshall made the second. No discussion, we vote all those in favor, motion carries.
It's going in the right direction.
It's headed that way, baby.
Boy, if only signs would move this way.
Yeah, yeah, we'd kill three hours on the sign ordinance. The ordinance is, eleven A is consider a joint resolution of the City Council, the City of Missouri City, Texas, and of the Board of Directors of Missouri City Recreation Leisure Government Corporation, adopting a meeting room use policy, providing for repeal, providing for the effective date.
Oh, we approve them.
You missed that. Counselman Marshall made the motion, who made the second? Counselman Wynn.